January 21st, 2020, meeting of the Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners. We let direct show that a quorum is present, and if everyone will please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. With that, I first order of business is approval of the agenda. With the consensus of commissioners, I'd like to, under other, put the workers' comp joining with the WCCA back on. Just reminding that back in December 3rd, we did look at it, and there wasn't a motion, but there doesn't have to be a motion for something to not move forward. But we did as a consensus talk about it and felt at that time it was necessary, so I'd like to put it back on. Gary will come up, McLean at that time during other, to give us some additional information as been presented. Also, under executive session, we'll have real estate as well as personnel. Is there any other changes to the agenda, commissioners? If there are no other changes at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
So we've got a motion by Commissioner Shanefield. Does that be a second, Mr. Commissioner Lloyd? You got a second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda is approval of the minutes, January 7th, 2020. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of January 7th, 2020, as presented.
Do we have a motion by Commissioner Smith? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second to by Commissioner Johnson to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, under tab B, is acceptance of the bills, which is the EALs, the monthly report, the bonds, the ABATs rebates, as well as the hospital maintenance expenditures. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the county vouchers and warrants, the EAL, the monthly reports, the bonds, the ABATs rebates, and the hospital maintenance expenditures as presented.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, we do have a motion to approve the bills as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. First order of business is a budget amendment by Rock Springs Sweetwater County Airport. Ms. Berry, you're here today.
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning, Bonnie. Thank you for being here. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay, would you please come up to us and please tell us who we are?
I am Bonnie Berry, the accounting manager for Sweetwater County.
Devin Rubik, the airport director, Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, Ms. Berry?
This morning, we have Resolution 20-01-CL-01. It is a budget amendment for Sweetwater County. It increases the expenditures in the general fund by $62,977.83, going to the Rock Springs Sweetwater County Airport account. It decreases the general county reserves by the same amount, $62,977.83, going out of the carryover.
Very good. All right. Thank you, Ms. Berry. Do we have any questions for Ms. Berry? Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing, Ms. Berry. I'd like to, why are we doing this? Why do you need this money? What's your, what's your issue with this adjustment?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, this adjustment is just to correct an issue that occurred at the end of the fiscal year, fiscal year 19. If you guys remember back to early 2019, this commission approved funding for our terminal design, $133,333, and we did not draw all of that money down from the commission before June 30th. So on, I guess, through the county's end of year process, that money was rolled over to carryover, and so this is just pulling it back from carryover back to our line item for us to finish out that project. That's, that's all it is.
So the total amount did not change?
It did not change. Mr. Chairman, pleasure.
All right. Any other questions?
No, that was one.
Okay. There's no other questions, I believe, at this point. Did you have one?
No.
Okay. If there's no other questions at this time, we'll open this up for a public hearing, so anybody who wish to comment on this issue from the public, please feel free to at this time. Yes?
I'm glad to hear that it was just a roll over.
Would you please, excuse me, would you please stand and introduce yourself?
My name is Kate Neal, and I work for High Country Realty, and I'm glad to hear that it wasn't additional money added into what should have been budgeted and that it's just a roll over.
Thank you. We all are. We all are. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? We'll close this here. At this point in time, commissioners, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 20-01-CL-01, which is a budget amendment for the Rock Springs Sweetwater County Airport in the amount of $62,977.83.
It's a move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Thanks for being here, Devin. Okay, next item on the list is tab D, which is a county retail liquor license for Buckboard Marina, and that is our county clerk, Cindy Lee. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Today, notice is hereby given that an applicant, whose name is that fourth below, which is Buckboard Marina at Blimby Gorge LLC, is, has an application for a county retail liquor license for the period of January 21st, 2020 through April 9th, 2020. It's brought forward by Tony and Jennifer Valdez. I believe they brought in Linda, they purchased the Buckboard Marina, and it's the length of a liquor license, so that's until the new term shows up, but they have to get their own, but they can't just hold it over and.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
So this is, in essence, a renewal of existing at some point in time, and the only problem with it is because of the.
New owners.
New owners. So it's not an additional liquor license.
Right, it's not an additional, but to them, it's a new.
And it is a liquor license, it's not a mortgage.
Right, it is an actual contract retail liquor license.
Any other questions? Very good. Any other questions, commissioners? At this time, we will open up the, for public hearing regarding the new county retail liquor license for Buckboard Marina at Blimby Gorge Way, doing business as Buckboard Marina. Public comment? Public comment? Close for public comment. Commissioners, your pleasure?
Chairman?
Yes?
I will make a motion to approve the application by Buckboard Marina at Blimby Gorge LLC, doing business with Buckboard Marina for the liquor license as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Now, the second from Commissioner Smith. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. All right, at this point in time, we'll move forward with Commissioner comments, and I guess I'm the first, so I don't know if I need to apologize for the things I'm going to bring up or not, just because there's a number of them. I know, but they're just informational basis, Misses. First of all, scholarship, I didn't hear from any of you on the scholarship draft form, so I just want to make sure that there was any questions on revision. If there's not, I will move forward and.
Was my revision in there after the last meeting? Sorry.
And that was, yes, in fact, here's where it was added on the information page of list other awards and scholarships, as six years ago. So it's there, there's a copy, and I will take them forward to the schools unless I hear otherwise, and notify them. Also, I'll hand out liaisons. I did, really, I did add two, two extra sheets in it, or not sheets, but two extra lines, and one is SCDC, where it's, Commissioner Shanefield is listed as a board member, and then myself as the liaison, and that, so there are otherwise not anything, none of the liaisons have changed, front and back, there's some on the back too, please, and so with that, there they are, and we'll just leave them and continue to move forward. And I think at any point in time that somebody feels there's a conflict with scheduling or what they're doing, and they need to do some shuffling, just visit with me, and we'll get together and see how we can help each other out, and go from there, okay? But it will remain that way for the rest of this year, so that one's pretty well taken care of there. Then also, we got a letter from the Department of Revenue, and I'd like to just mention that property tax appraisal certificates for Sweetwater County in Mr. DeWes's department, like congratulate you that his staff is either one, two, let's see, Dave, Patty, Joel, Maryann, and Lorraine are permanently certified, and under temporary certification is Heather, Jessica, and Casey, and just, that's a great thing for the county, Dave, and please let your people know that very pleased with what they're doing and making sure they stay certified. We appreciate it. Also, just to share with you also, direct distribution, I listened in on the revenue meeting, and moving forward is going to be $105 million direct distribution to, that didn't change to all the cities and towns. The one thing that they're looking at, a recommendation is the amendment to, for that, and we grab it so I don't say the wrong thing. What they're looking at there is amending the bill, which would be population, towns with populations over 35, they would raise their minimum of $10,000, they'd raise it from 10,000 to 15,000, and for towns under 35,000, raising it from 20,000 to 35,000 immediately. It was amazing that the number of towns that had, at the hearing that had indicated that anywhere from 17% to 24% of their town budgets depended on direct distribution dollars. In the long run, the bigger cities is where it will be impacted, but they felt it was important, and because of that particular recommendation, Senator Bev, or Representative or Senator Bebaut had strongly supported moving this bill forward as long as the small towns were taken care of. So the 105, at this point in time, is in place, so we will hope that that continues to move forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'd like to comment on that.
Please.
Again, I've been very vocal about this. It's not enough. Cities, towns, and counties should receive a more significant direct distribution from the state. We represent all of the people in Sweetwater County, as well as the other commissioners represent everyone in the whole state around, and yet we have to go shy and begging for one. It's not right, I don't agree with it, and I don't think we should agree with it. But you are on the Board of Directors now, and I would like you just at the opportune times to bring those issues forward.
And I, and I will, and I'll continue to do so. The other aspect I think that continues to be, need to be brought up, is the consensus money that was taken away years ago for cities and towns, so there's some great work to do there, but if we don't stay involved and stay connected, we can't be a part of it.
You're not at the table, you're on the menu.
Thank you. That's, we haven't heard that before. There we are, so thank you very much. Also, we all received a, what was called a dissolution letter regarding the 2013 special purpose tax project or in that, and I turned that over to Mr. DeLeone, and he's looking into it to find out what we need to do as far as with that dissolution letter regarding that particular special purpose tax situation, and when he completes it, he'll come forward and let us know what our actions are, and as well as what we need to do, so when we finish with this special purpose tax, then you will know how to not let that happen again. So we have time, and as soon as we know, we'll get there. Commissioner Johnson, for facilities, has, do you recall, has there been any conversations regarding the signs on the front of the courthouse over here that are covered up with paper, the letters and that, when we moved the courts? What they did is cover the clear thing, do you recall? Okay.
Did you, did you talk to Chuck about it?
Yeah, so, you know, things around or bit them off or anything, I was just curious that, it's all, you know, I'll follow through if it's all right with you.
Absolutely.
And then the other thing too is, it was brought to our attention that I know the old library, Carnegie Libraries, understood to see if anything can be done with it, but while we're waiting for that to happen, that library continues to not get better, but slowly get worse. One of our judges has looked at the building and has asked that, if it's all right with you, to visit with our facilities people, there's a stained glass window that's irreplaceable in that building, and as that building settles, it's beginning to put pressure on that stained glass window, and they're asking if there's some way and how we can have our guys remove it, if it's safe to do so, and then cover the hole up and preserve that window for if the building moves forward for being fixed up, or at least if nothing else, we'd have that window out of that building in case we don't do anything, that building is destroyed. Go ahead.
Is it an external window or internal?
I think it's external, you can see from the outside, I guess. It's all right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we need to.
As you know, the structural, that's been structurally, we had a structural inspection made of that building, and it's not.
It's not safe.
It's not safe.
Yeah, so, you know, I'll visit with him if it's all right, use the commission, that type of thing. I would like to take a minute and do a special thanks out of Commissioner Johnson's liaisons is Mark Cotton, he does a lot of work with public plans, who I received a copy of a letter that came out regarding the migration routes, comments, and that type of thing. Very well done, Commissioner Johnson, and I know you're part of that, and I'd like you to pass on to Mark, at least me, and if the other commissioners agree, thank you, job well done.
Absolutely.
And continue working in that arena.
Well, I appreciate that very much. I want to make some comments on that. I've had some thoughts about that migration corridor, any corridor, and I will cover that when I make my comments.
Please do, thank you. Just share with you, on February 13th, when we're down for the WCCA Legislative Conference, that Thursday, 13th, is not only the legislative dinner with the legislators and joint with the other counties, but also, we've been asked if we want to continue, or not continue because it's taken a break, but do we want to continue to, or do we want to be a part of, of the reception that they'd like to host at the Little America that same evening a little earlier, where the legislators can come and visit with cities, both cities and us, and generally at that thing, Commissioner Johnson, I think when you were, I, they did do it last year, but when we were there in the past, they brought Kranzke's, they brought other things, and do you wish to have that legislative reception? Generally, the cost of whatever it is, it's been a third between us and a third between each city, and the cost they're anticipating is running from 1,500 to $2,000. Now, Rick Lee with the chamber who's organizing this, will be here later on the agenda, if we want to ask some questions then, you know, if we can't get them answered now. Go ahead, any questions?
Yeah, there's two issues. The dinner, you know, we share that with several, Lincoln County and us, that's one issue that we do, and strongly recommend we continue that.
Yep.
And the reception, we've also done that, but the chamber is taking care of that for us, so Rick, and he's saying it's, how much is our share again?
They think it's going to be between 1,500 and 2,000, so we get a third of it, so six to 700, I'd say.
All right.
You know?
Yes, we have.
We've done that, and I want to make sure, with new commissioners, just so you know what's going on.
That doesn't mean we have to do.
Yeah, that's right. So continue, comments?
So it would basically be like a co-sponsor that between the city local, Rock Springs, Green River, and I'll say educate local legislators or?
We're going to talk with them about the legislative issues, and I've got those bills, I brought them with me this morning, of what, so far.
And that would be between our sessions, three commission meetings, and then our dinner with the.
So the day would go Thursday, Commissioner's conference, it would finish Thursday, whatever time it is, then shortly after that, the reception, welcome, with, with the five elected officials would be invited, as well as the legislators and the two towns with their ruling bodies, as well as the county commissioners would go into this reception and visit with about the bills. You know, one of the topics, just like Commissioner Johnson shared, is an opportunity to visit about, hey, you know, continue to support, make sure we get it, and that, or any of the bills that I'll pass out this morning, and that type of thing, and then shortly after that is the joint county dinner. So you have the choice of, you're going to have to make a choice, you can eat Kranzke's all night, and you can go have your, or you can, whatever, but they're both at that same evening, and that type of thing. So anything else, Commissioner Lloyd?
No, I think that's it.
Mr. Shanefield?
In the past, some of the nonprofit organizations that are down there for legislative actions or, you know, to testify, they have been invited as well, so I've been involved a couple of times, and I think it's been, it's been positive, and it's allowed for some good open conversations, and I think it would be a plus for us to move forward and continue to support that, be involved in it.
It almost feels redundant to me, because we're, because we're going to be meeting with the same legislators afterwards, but maybe, and you guys have been more involved, so that's.
But that's not true.
Okay.
You'll get, you'll get people like Bebaut will be at this reception, Governor should be at this reception, and they're not invited to the other reception, so I think there's a bigger following that we get opportunities to see some people you wouldn't see at this reception.
Well, that makes sense then.
Yeah, so, thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Anything else? All right, so we'll go ahead and move forward, and I'll tell them how we're, we're players and that type of thing, so thank you for that.
Bill, so, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Somebody on this commission will have to help Rick with that, we will require some help from us.
Yeah.
I can, I can help with that.
Yeah, we'll help, we'll help with this. We'll make sure it gets done, I mean, it's just been a matter of wait at the last minute, here's what we got to do. They do have some swag things that they do put out, and I think we still have some of the old koozies.
But we don't wish to get some more.
Should get some more.
Those will be seen.
Yeah, they work very well, so, okay, and we'll talk more about that. Anything else? All right, very good, we're planning on being a part of that. I also would like to, I'm sure Commissioner Johnson, because of, and Commissioner Shanefield, but the design group, Thomas P. Millard, were in town last week, and Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I do know they visited airport, they visited with Raising Association, Simpaw, also the Pacific Power, just to name a few, plus SCDC. So they're in town starting to do their work, and I've known who they've been visiting with, been catching a few of the people as I see them, and people are pretty impressed that they believe we hired a really good consulting group to help us with that middle backstreet project, so that's moving forward. So I just wanted to share that. Also, as we get ready for budget preparation, what I'd like to do is for our next meeting, bring in Dave and Rob, ask them to come in as agenda item, and just give us a status quo of where we're at, and where they see us for funding. Is there anybody else at that time, the other commissioners would like present?
Bonnie.
Huh?
Bonnie just.
Whoever you want, Bonnie too? Okay, so we're planning on doing that, so, of inviting them at our next meeting, and did you have something? Sure.
To dovetail on the budget prep, I think this is the perfect time, we've been dancing around the conversation of strategic planning, and I think the time is now to really start looking, as we're looking at our budget moving forward, to start the basis of some actual strategic planning, so I would like to explore that in our next meeting, and then maybe, you know, look at getting a consultant or somebody in that's going to help us on a professional level with that.
Okay, so, we, let's, we can bet that at this point in time, who, Commissioner Shanefield would like to have further discussion, agenda item at the next meeting for strategic planning, thoughts of the other commissioners? You okay with it? I mean, nobody's just, okay? All right, so please on the agenda item, we'll have a discussion of strategic planning, moving it forward, and that's for the county.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll put it on, and we'll look at it. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Yeah, and I think we can also, dealing with the budget, after Ron and Rob and Dave are done, we can talk about how we want to work on the budget. We all experienced, did you experience last year?
No, I came in right after.
You did afterwards, but Jeff and, and Roy did, and I, and Commissioner Johnson, myself did, so at that point in time, we can say, hey, do we want to continue or change how we're doing things, okay? Also, Judge Labrie will be with us at the next meeting, let me hand that stuff out, it's, he called me up and visited with me, and he'd like to come in and visit with us about the district court, there's, here's a workload spreadsheet for everybody that he shared with me, he'll come in and talk more about that, but the time has come, in his mind, that it's time to address it, whether, you know, whether it's full time to address it, whether, you know, whether it's full-time, part-time, shared within the District Three area, and there are implications of that, and those, the primary implication of it is preparation of that area to house a third district court, not even a courtroom, but also a third district judge. So, he'll be in to talk to us about that, so, and what those implications are as reading forward with that particular topic. And finally, you should be happy about that. The referee received a notification from the Rocket Miner regarding our desires for, they put out a legislative guide and a, and a progress edition, and they contact us every year. We haven't done it for a while, and that type of thing, it's, it's just a matter of if we move forward, and then it's a matter of somebody being able to do it. The, this group forgot, I'll pass this along, and if it's something we want to talk about here, and, well, here's the strange part, the deadline has passed, it's January 17.
Who was in charge of that?
Just got the notice in my, after the last meeting, so with that in mind.
That takes care of it.
We'll take care of that. I should have read that quicker, but I still think you need to be informed about what's going, what's happening. And then, as I promised you, there's a copy of the legislative bills that are on the WCCA tracking site. There may be more to add as it moves forward. Reason I hand those out to you is, is just, that's what we go down there for, but at our conference to have conversation for support, oppose, or monitoring those bills and that type of thing. I'm sure there'll be more to add. I don't know if you, you need to let me know if you want to take time to have discussions about these bills, but I might remind you, we have one more meeting after today. And that brings to mind that if we do any, anything with workshops, as well as that type of thing, we need to get a notice in the out to have the special workshops and that out there, and go from there, so. And right now, our legal paper is the STAR, Green River STAR, and their notification, their deadlines are noon on Tuesday, to get anything in their paper. But again, too, when it comes to, I believe, and John, you can help me out a little bit, but when it comes to special meetings or places where we know there's going to be all five of us or more than, or three or more, we can notify the advertising agencies for them to decide if they want to advertise or not. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so, it's just a matter of notifying them, and then, of course, they'll have to decide. Now, are we, when we notify them, are we bound for payment if they choose to advertise it or not?
That's a good question. I think the, the duty is for notification. I would, I would say that it would be appropriate to pay for the Green River, whoever the newspaper of record is. Otherwise, I think that everybody else gets, it's their choice whether they, how they advertise, if they advertise. That's, the important part there is to provide the notice.
Provide the notice?
To them.
To them, in the appropriate amount of time, but whether it gets published or not, that's not our concern.
Correct.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, if there's no more questions, I will close. Sorry. All right, next up, here's Mr. Shanefield.
So, I've spent a significant amount of time in meetings around six-teni, obviously been tweaking, and we have that going forward later in our meeting today. The museum board had a meeting last week, and then I also have a meeting on Thursday with the city of Green River and the museum to discuss the potential grant to repair the depot, and that may be a possible place for the museum to move into. We were, I was under the impression that it was further along in the grant process, but it is not, and so Christina has been, had a few conversations around the grant and what, you know, the actual needs of the grant are. The city of Green River doesn't have a grant writer currently, and so I wanted to sit down with them and, and see what their goals were moving forward, and ensure that that was in the best interest of the museum and the county. And then I'll report back on that once we get some things lined out. The museum's storage is thinking they will be able to move, that everything is almost completed to move the rest of the county's port items out of that storage area, and so they're thinking spring will be the time that they're able to move their storage, which is really exciting for them. They're excited to get this stuff out of the storage that it's currently in. So, that's, that's a big update for them. I do plan on attending the legislative session that entire week of the 10th through the 14th, so if there's any bills, anything that people would like to have discussion with, with me about ahead of time, please reach out to me. I would love to meet with you and hear what our county's concerns are around this, this session upcoming. And then, the last thing that I wanted to talk about, will be requested to be on our next agenda, and that's the SEDC. In multiple meetings, the board has unanimously voted to attempt to move SEDC for resources under the county umbrella. This would resolve a significant number of things, it would be a cost savings due to the fact that we already have the office space, we already have the phone, a computer will be minimal, the health insurance and benefits are much cheaper because we have a larger organization and more people, more employees, and so currently, the cities are planning on resolutions at their meetings tonight. I felt that that was appropriate for them to make resolutions prior to it coming in front of the commission for approval, to ensure that both cities are on board. They are strongly supportive of this. They want to give SEDC the support that it needs to move forward and still have, you know, a little say in, in what the actions moving forward of SEDC are going to be. They would like to remain actively involved in economic development in our county, and they also have committed to continuing the financial support of the program at the levels that we all are currently. So, right now, it will be, it would just be a transition of location and support and allocation of services. If we need to write a grant, Christina can assist in that. If we need, you know, some GIS mapping, it's right here in the building. The resources are here, and I think that moving forward, this is going to be an exciting, an exciting growth period for SEDC. I always say you can't keep doing the same thing over and over and expect a different result, and so I think that this is a great transition for something that's been considered kind of a standalone, and hasn't really been given allocation or assistance to move forward, and our board is pretty excited about it.
Good.
And with that, if there's any questions, yes?
As you know, I've not been a strong supporter of SEDC. It smells like sweet, again, all over, and it was your words, you just, I agree with what you said, oh, we're gonna do the same thing with it. The issue that I have with it is, and I, and I don't want to get into a discussion because we're gonna have that discussion, and the thing you did not say clearly is that we're gonna take over, in fact, we're gonna incur another employee just to do this. I think that's significant, we need to look at that. We've taken great pains to reboost the cost of county government, and this is going the other way. And I can understand why the cities are for it, because it's not gonna cost them anything, we're gonna incur the costs, total costs, and then there's a lot of other issues, but the biggest question I thought, or not a question, concern I've got is that we're gonna incur another employee, and I have, I'll make it, but we're discussing it.
No, we can discuss that, and we've had discussion around that. It's actually going to save all three entities money, even though it will be great because we've been financing it at thirty thousand annually, but we can have that discussion.
Very good. Good, good comments. So, any other comments? Anything else? All right, if there's no other comments, Ms. Shanefield, and move on, and Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Airport board meeting, good news out of the airport is Devon's worked with Flex Jets, they're a fractional ownership company, but say, partial ownership of private jets, and they've been hangaring at the airport, which has brought in great revenue lately, and paid dividends for that hangar that, that was built, and he's also working currently with, or trying to, trying to work with NetJets, a much larger company, to see if they will have a desire to come and, and provide revenue for us as well. So, good job there, we appreciate that, and the help that it's been there, and it's, it has helped quarterly and monthly as well, since they've been, been coming up to the airport, so finances have been great there. Hospital board meeting, there are some concern, I guess, that Reid and Marty were concerned about the 2020 finances, not in a, or gee, we're heading the wrong way and we're gonna run out of money or anything like that, but just not quite achieving the goals that they had hoped to, that they had set for themselves and had hoped to reach, and so Marty, being the head of the finance audit committee, has asked some hard questions and, and looking to the staff to bring back some answers of what's gonna change, how are things gonna, what can I do a little bit differently to point in the right direction. So, it's great to hear that and the emphasis on that. Also have a budget workshop coming up to finn shortly, that'll be a good time in February, it always is. And they also talked about looking at becoming a critical access hospital, and the reason for that is because it receives a higher reimbursement rate from CMS, and so they had done that in the past, and it ran into a few roadblocks. One of those was Aspen Mountain being, having a Medicaid number at the time, which they're gonna look into, don't think that they have that anymore, and so it could be the first step in perhaps becoming a critical access hospital. Can't have another hospital within thirty miles of, of your facility that has a Medicaid number, so just some things that they're doing there, working hard on to try to make sure that the finances are headed in the right direction, and it just feels good. There's a lot of attention being paid, and a lot of good people on that board over there, so I appreciate their work. Just wanted to point that out to them. Finally, the Red Tide Gala, coming up a week from Saturday. We are the current owners of the Golden Bed Pound of Shame, and so I would ask, don't have to answer, just, is there support to do something, make a donation, and whoever's donation makes the least amount of money at the Red Tide Gala, raises the least amount of money, gets the Bed Pound of Shame for the next year. So, if there's interest in that, feel free to let me know, and I'll try my best to put something together and give it into the, into the auction, just to help support the Red Tide Gala.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's what I have.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Commissioner Smith, Mr. Johnson?
First, I have the Public Works Department to record. I'll read it for the public to benefit each other, copy of this. Parks, going through the annual park assessment with Chris and Brad, so that we can start planning projects and budgeting for capital needs in the, each of the parks. Buildings, working through the latest round of updates on the new solutions program. We are hoping to go live with program in the second week of February. In the engineering area, scheduling, putting a master yearly schedule together to see what we need to do to build for the yearly maintenance projects, and how their ability to overlap so that I can plan on construction management before us. Also working on a master maintenance schedule so that Rowan Bridge can accomplish all of the summer repair projects in a timely fashion. I think this is something that you've kind of thought we should do on a doc, and I think Lauren brought it up also, and June, June's very good doing this, and started to do it, I think it's gonna help us budget, budgeting process. Rowan Bridge, I hate to say it, but we are almost caught by a snowfall. They're going back and creating more snow breaks and story genres to start preparing for what are historically the stu, the two snowiest months of the year. Again, he's, he comes to whatever weather forecaster, I don't know how he knows, but he knows, I guess. Next, on the 10th, I attended the CLG meeting in Cameron, and some of the issues that are facing CLG, where we interface with both the DLM management and the Forest Service in preparation for the Roxbury and IMP, is the, the funding that we're gonna get, or should get through the state for FNUCA funding, and there's been a problem with, with that relative to the, I don't know whether it's a problem we have with the governor, or whether we have it with the staff, but we're trying to work through that and figure that out, but it's, it could be very detrimental to the future of the CLG. On the 15th, I met along with our CLG consultant, Richard Stamm, who's a former retired Forest Service employee, and Mark Cott. We met with DLM relative to the Greater Little Mountain area, and the primary issue is whether there's commercial logging capabilities on top of those two mountains, being Little Mountain and Pine Mountain. The judgment being, has been made that there are not. I think that's a good judgment, but then the next step is fuels management on those two mountains. And I think that this is a benefit to us because there's the possibility that we might be able to clean up those two mountains with the dead timber that's on those two mountains. One of the issues that brought up by the DLM is they're still continuing to do juniper finning, which I strongly disagree with, with thinning junipers along the bottoms of, and on the sides of the mountains, both through the mountain and some of the other areas there. While on top, we've got these areas where we get a lightning strike or something, and very significant force fire out there would be detrimental to, to those two mountains. There's a meeting tonight, a presentation tonight on the Greater Little Mountain area. The video that's been prepared, I think there's gonna be panel discussion after that, I will participate in that. Reiterate my feelings about Little Mountain, I think it's the crown jewels, Sweetwater County, and we need to take care of it. Another issue that I think that is very significant to us that's, that's out there is these migration corridors, and I've given you a, a copy of, I indicated in last meeting on the wildlife article that was on there on Highway 28. And, and one of the things that, that, let me back up a little bit and tell you what you might not know, is the Upper Hold App to Red Desert Migration Corridor runs from Teton County through Sublet County into Sweetwater County. And these migration corridors can have some detrimental effect on the, and I'll just use as an example the oil and gas industry, because some of the discussion that's been dealt with is no surface occupancy in some of these areas. That's not in best interest, in my opinion, in Sweetwater County. So, one of the thoughts that I've had is when you, when you talk about a corridor, what is a corridor? It's similar, I would, I'd put it like, we have a corridor out here in front of this building, or in front of this, that runs from this office down to the clerk's office, for example. That's a corridor. The destination, and you use that corridor is to get into the clerk's office. It's the same thing that's happening with, with this migration corridor coming out of Teton County. The thing that I, that's dawned on me, and the way that Sweetwater County can avoid the negative impacts of that, it's Highway 28, which we've been working with for, for a long while, but if you were to say that that corridor ends at Highway 28, and those deer and animals can then get in the Sweetwater County, into the Red Desert, they can go anywhere they want. There is no reason, in my opinion, to protect them once they're in the Red Desert. Now, that's controversial, and, and that's a new thought that I've had, but that gets us out of the problem that is going to be faced in Sublet County primarily with how they're going to remove the bottle, what they call bottlenecks. The biggest bottleneck- The biggest bottleneck is Pine Dale itself. They have problems getting past Fremont Lake and Pine Dale and developments occurring, that's a bottleneck. Highway twenty-eight is a barrier. If we can get those animals over Highway twenty-eight, there's no need for them to have any protection in the Red Desert. It's just like, that's the destination, that is the destination of those animals, both the deer and animal, and to some aspect, the elk also. It's like, once you get down to the clerk's office, you're in trouble, I know that, but anyway, you do get there, and there's no need to have that corridor go any further. That's what I'm suggesting on this migration corridor that you're talking about, which is the number one corridor that's being discussed in the whole state of Wyoming. And there's been, the governor's made a proclamation on that as to what needs to be done with this, it's still in draft form, I guess, but I think that has some negative impacts on Sweetwater County, and I don't really know how to get around them. But I think one of the first things we need to do is remove the barrier, which is Highway twenty-eight in some fashion. And this article I've given you shows what they're doing with the right-of-way fencing modifications. And I applaud the Wyoming Department and Gabe Fish for working with us on that, we're the ones that put forward the initiatives that got it to that point. And I think that probably is all I have.
Question? Yeah, you made a comment that a new thought, that the dispersion of the Red Desert, there would be some pushback, I sensed.
Oh, there would be pushback.
Have you got a feeling for what that pushback is already, or what it could be?
Well, I got the argument, you know, it gets back to what I'm talking about, that corridor out there, a corridor takes you from one point to another point. Once you, the corridor serves its purpose, there's no need to protect them, and there's negative impacts that will occur if that corridor receives further protection through the Red Desert. Those animals, what those animals are trying to do is migrate south for the protection. Animal can't do it because of twenty-eight, but the deer can and the elk can. Then they get stopped again at the interstate. In my opinion, there should be an overpass on the interstate, so they can actually go further south. But that's a bigger hurdle for us to go over. And I have some thoughts about how oil and gas, if I can get them on board with what these thoughts are, is that we would give them the PR that they need, because that's who we're trying to protect. Well, we're not trying to protect the oil and gas industry, we're trying to protect those jobs that are there, the quality jobs that they create. It's, in good times, it's forty percent of our economy, but if we can get the oil and gas industry to help fund those overpass, at least one overpass, their, Gabe and Fish thinks we need two, but get one overpass on Highway twenty-eight, and, you know, give them credit for that, just put on that overpass, courtesy of BP, courtesy of Exxon, see whoever's paying for that. That would be good PR for them, and it's in the best interest of a very valuable asset for the governor, and I agree with him on that, it's, those animals are an asset for the state of Wyoming, so they deserve protection also. But I think there's a way to do it, it can be done, and I think we need to continue to be proactive. I think the people that are going to push back are the NGOs whom we have a good relationship with, because I think they're going to disagree with that, but I think, I have an argument for that.
Okay, very good. I'll just, you know, because as we get out there and bring, not that this brought up, but we get out to submission, we're going to have conversations, I've kind of, and you share it, I've kind of sensed it, not only where it's going to come from, but what is, probably against their issues, and I appreciate that.
Well, it gets back to, there are places we can drill and should drill, and I've said that before, and obviously it's in Sublet County is where it's occurring with the NPL and Jonah and Pine Dale and Eklund, but the revenue stream that runs out of that runs into Sweetwater County, that's the real corridor, and that's a revenue stream out of those fields in Sweetwater County. But I think the oil and gas industry should understand, we're trying to help them, not hinder them, because I think the way that the migration corridor team is being put together by the governor has some drawbacks. For example, can you imagine us trying to get agreement with Teton County as to who should be on that committee? You know, Wyoming has twenty-two counties and then with Teton.
That's exactly. That's true. That's very true. All right, thank you. All right, very good. Commissioner Smith?
Do you have any idea of what an overpass, the cost of being a overpass?
Several million dollars, it depends on the terrain, where you put it. For example, if you put it in a flat area, it's going to be more expensive, but if you've got a draw or something, you can put it, it's less, the underpass is cheaper, but it's very difficult to get some of those animals to go under a highway. But the point I'd make is if we can get the state of Wyoming in conjunction with oil and gas industry to pay for these things, what's a reasonable cost? What are those animals worth? Plus, all the accidents that are occurring, the deaths that are occurring with the collisions between those animals and automobiles. So, it's a significant number, I'm not an expert on it, but I know it's a, it's probably similar. The thing you need to look at to see whether it's viable or not are these overpasses that have been built in Sublet County, they're very, very effective, you know, without mining.
Thank you. Any other questions? One more. Different subject. Working out of planning and zoning with Eric Bingham, have we heard anything regarding the industrial siting impact for ExxonMobil status?
Yes. Matter of fact, he gave me some preliminary numbers from the meetings he's had. What Lincoln County thinks we should do, and I agree with them, is we split that fifty-fifty between Lincoln County and Sweetwater County. That facility is in Lincoln County, we need to keep that in mind. And if they're willing to split that with us, and it's not a significant amount, a million dollars is significant, I guess, to me it would be, relatively. But we, what I think our position should be and continue to be is we'll split that with Lincoln County. But to do that, the first blush of the meeting that was held was that fire people and sheriff for, very significant busting that budget, so there's, we need today, Eric and that group is going to be meaningful with them, so we'll see where that goes. But if we're not to the point where we're ready to go to industrial signing.
Okay, are we to the point, your visitation with Eric, are we to the point where we need to consider signing a point commissioner of that committee?
We're going to have to do that, I would suggest we do that similar to what we did with the TransWest, the other, I forget which West that.
Gateway.
Gateway West, do the same thing, it's not so significant, I don't think, with the Exxon project, but it's going to be very significant with the general project.
All right, so you'll keep us appraised to that and bring it forward?
This meeting today will kind of get that in a preliminary point where we're going to have to, this commission's going to have to agree with that's where we want to go. It's in discussion, not similar to what we did with TransWest, very recently.
We'll look forward to moving forward on that, because that will, a million dollars, it's a million more than what somebody has, so we want to.
And it's, it's impactful, and obviously who's being impacted, we're being impacted, but I think bigger impact is in Lincoln County, more than there. The first blush was that split fifty-four.
All right, all right, very good, that's all I have. Any other questions for Commissioner Johnson? Mr. Roy, do you have?
Couple of things. Last week I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting, it was very interesting because they had a legislative forum to preempt of, before the legislature. Senators Selmey and Baldwin and Representative Stitt, Freeman and Blake, all presented what they saw as the big issues coming up in the local legislature. So, that was a great opportunity to get insight as we prepare for it. Couple other things, I met with Karen Kelly, I'll be meeting with, John doesn't know it, but we'll be meeting in the next day or two with Attorney Jay Leon, regarding a project Karen's been working on for about three to five years on file retention, and I think we've got enough information now to be able to move forward, so I'm really excited to help Karen with that project. I've had a library board meeting, things continue to go with well with the library, they've now add, the Rock Springs Library have moved all the books upstairs, and the bottom area is completely clear, in preparation to start the children's discovery center. And I think there's been a lot of local business and entities, I know the airport has made a contribution, it's really going to make this an amazing option, and I can, and it's really great to see what they're doing there at the library. And I think Commissioner Johnson had talked about employees in the community in the county and how our numbers have gone down if we've become more efficient. The library actually has like twenty less full-time employees now than they did like, you know, like three to five years ago, and what they're doing, and the innovations they're using are really amazing, to see they're still offering quality services in different ways, they're finding efficiencies to do it. So, a lot of kudos to Jason Grob and his board of directors. There was STAR last week, STAR, really no major issues going on with STAR at this point, it continues to operate fairly well. The events complex, we do have a meeting coming up next week, but I do want to make mention that they will be presenting today regarding a possible budget amendment based upon increase in insurance. And this is something, when we made our budget, we had seen as a possible oversight, and that was something that also affected Southwest Counseling and the library and the events complex. So, as they come in today, we'll have this discussion when we get there, right? Historically, it's my understanding that the commission has funded those component agencies on the insurance, that we really take a look at that request today and look at how it's impacted those other agencies, because I think that's a significant issue. So, we'll discuss that when we get there. Throughout the rest of the week, the six penny has been, a lot, I've met with multiple entities just on where they're at with their six penny, just looking at ideas. I finally came up with a pretty foolproof method I would actually share today, which I still think is really solid. I actually went to County Treasurer Rob Slaughter, just because he's been around for a long time, and he's confused me a little bit because he threw some other ideas out today, so as we sit up here, if I'm perplexed, I'm trying to decide if my idea's better or Rob's, and I don't know in public what my decided the answer is, so whatever the right answer was, it's the one I came up with. But I do think that has been an important process. The other thing, done some research on SCDC, hearing that some of this stuff is, might be coming along, I wanted to do my own research to be prepared and make the best education we have, so I met with Rick Lee, and I've met with Rick Lee and Kayla, and I've also reached out to Dave Hanks, who we played some photo tag with, because I think he also will have some good insight to the situation. The last, and as I circle back to six penny, I missed something in my notes, I know it's a small number, and it's not always the most accurate, but I'll give some kudos to Sweetwater Now for putting out the poll on the six penny. And I actually reached out to Gary, and he actually sent me back the responses, and even though some of the percentages really surprised me, and I'll be honest, it hasn't really swayed what I said, but seeing the responses, I think have been where, it's very good.
Makes you need to relax, yeah. Makes you need to relax.
No, what I'm saying, well, I'll just be honest, I think I was really surprised hey, they were willing to go with a longer period of time. That's where I, you know, when I talk to constituents, I still feel the number is lower than, because some of their numbers show like nineteen percent of people were willing to go one hundred and forty, one hundred and fifty million, and when I've talked to people, I haven't seen that same value, and so, but I think the value comes to that poll, really comes from the comments, or the constituents who are saying, and their actual comments, and I think that was very good. If any of the commissioners would like that information, I'd be glad to forward that to you, Gary put it in the spreadsheet for me, so I thought that was very helpful, I'd be willing to share that information. And then the last thing is, you know, I've now been a commissioner for a year and a, this is two meetings, and this is the fullest house we've seen, and whether I agree, and I can tell you why I know the majority of you are here, just knowing who you are, so we can, we'll just put that particular out, but whether I agree with your issues or disagree with your issues, it's exciting for me to see people come forward to these meetings and sharing their opinions and their thoughts, because it does affect us, even though I just said it doesn't. And so, I'm glad to see you guys here to represent your issues, because that's what helps guide us, so I really do like the packed house, so, thank you. And then after break, we'll feel less important, what have you guys, but I do appreciate you guys being here and to share your views, so, that's, that's all I have.
Questions?
Yeah, good. Comments, not necessarily questions. First one, you deal with Slaughter, you go in there with your thoughts, put in one direction, he puts a spin on it, and you leave his office talking to yourself. He's been that to me for many, many years. He's very, very astute at that. The other is the feedback, and I agree with you, you don't want the facts to sway your thinking. I'm somewhat like that, and I've had a tremendous amount of feedback on it also, but it's different than what it says. We're faced with making those decisions, you have to gather in everything you can, appreciate what you're doing.
All right, very good.
The last thing I'd probably throw out is I also want to just, once again, throw out thanks to former Commissioner Marie West, who I've reached out a couple, two times to, once again, about the six penny, and with his history as the chairman of the six penny and running that committee, he's had a lot of great insights, so I can tell you a lot of what I've come up with, Reid's really been a good influence and knowledge base, so thanks to those guys.
So, you're good, Rob, not so much. Rob, you feel?
No, Rob's good, because the problem is Rob gives me his idea like at eight fifteen, fifteen minutes before the meeting. It's Martin Luther King Day fault, because I was the, we couldn't meet yesterday, and because it's a federal holiday for governmental employees, unless you're running nonprofits, and then you work every day, and then, but with that being said, so now I've had to spin my head a little bit, because Rob does have some good ideas, and so I mainly make two presentations, so we'll see.
Very good. Any other comments?
Mr. Thermo, can I defend myself for just a second?
What you do?
First of all, in respect of what Commissioner Johnson said, you're right, I have done that for many years. I do that on purpose, just to keep everybody off balance. With respect to Mr. Roy's comments, what he did was he called me the end of the week last week. If I would evaluate some ideas that he had, and we talked, and I said, yes, and I agree with very, a great majority of what his things were, but I said, you know, I would kind of look at it just a little bit differently. So, ninety-five percent of what he had come up with, I kind of agreed with, I just put a little spin on a little bit of that. I mean, first chance I had to talk with him was this morning when I came into the office at eight o'clock, because we didn't have work yesterday. He could have called me at home, but he didn't do that, so.
You go ahead.
But of course, I do appreciate.
And for the record, and for those that are listening, that was our County Treasurer, Rob Slaughter, so thank you, Rob. With that in mind, any other comments, any questions? I think at this time, we will go ahead and move in, we're scheduled nine thirty for County Resident Concerns, I just want to remind the board that at nine forty-five, the TABF agenda item with Judge Procoast will be by phone call, and that's when he'll be available, so we'll move into County Residents' Concerns though at this time. As we move into, the first thing I would ask is that, how many people, please raise your hand if you're here to comment. How many people want to comment? One, two, three, four. Okay, very good, we should be okay then. If there's a whole lot, I would put a very short time limit, not very, but short time limit, but we should be able to cover everybody's needs and give you each about three to four minutes, okay? So, if you decide to come up and comment, please sit or stand in the front row, please introduce yourself and who you're with, and please address the commission that way. Thank you.
I'm Caitlin, and I'm a small business owner of IQ LLC, I'm also a real estate agent. Before I begin, I want to address the notion that the public records are available for free under the basic search online. That basic search only shows indexing information. With that said, for the last few sessions, I have heard the commissioners state they do not oversee or have authority over the clerk. As a county commissioner, you're authorized to make policies for our county and are elected to serve and protect the citizens. Wyoming State Statute eighteen dash three dash four oh two says the county clerk is a clerk to the commissioners. And the section F states the clerk shall perform the other duties as required by the Board of County Commissioners. Wyoming Statute eighteen dash two dash one oh one says the powers of the county shall be exercised by the Board of County Commissioners. In other words, the commissioner generally supervise and oversee the county clerk, and therefore have the authority to overturn these. The definition of a restriction is a limitation. Prior to November two thousand and nineteen, we had unlimited access to public records on. Prior to November 2019, we had unlimited access to public records online from any time and anywhere. Since then, we've been limited to either paying an outrageous fee or having to come during designated hours to the county records office. Again, the definition of a restriction is a limitation, and the public is asking the county commissioners to create a policy that prohibits any county official from restricting or limiting access to public records. Ms. Lane stated that the I-Doc market's fees are to pay for the service, however, it's been established the fees are a profit that is being split 60, 40, and 80 to Tyler Technologies. In Tyler Technologies Amendment, it states the maintenance fees are invoiced and paid annually prior to the service. That was back in July. It mentions nothing about the split or percentage being applied for the annual cost of maintenance or service. In fact, the profit that is being made goes to the county general fund and is not under the authority or for her to delegate how it's spent. She admits that she doesn't know how much the revenues or the fees will create, but fills it the users to be responsible for the fees. Are you aware that the I-Doc market is being used by our county officials as part of their job duties? Obviously, these services contribute to the function of our county's office and because of that, it's a taxpayer's obligation for the service, not the users. Let me remind you of why the digital records exist in the first place. It was to preserve county records. This service was not provided to meet the needs of a small number of people. As Ms. Lane states, but advance our county through technology for the benefit of the entire county along with its employees. This was a capital project and was determined to be necessary over 10 years ago and was properly funded by our taxes to ensure protection against the loss of vital records for the generations to come. Upon reading the contract with Tyler Technologies, this has been an ongoing contract for over 10 years. The upgrade costs, the upgrade costs to I-Docs to incorporate, were to incorporate training and software for the county's office. The total was $3,355. The $776,000 project is U.S. Imaging, who has been employed to come in and actually scan the records from the hard copies to the digital format from 1985 all the way back to 1891. U.S. Imaging and Tyler Technologies I-Docs 5 are two different things. We're being told that those fees are going to be paid for U.S. technology. That's a benefit of the county. I'm asking you to exercise your authority over the county clerk provided by law and reverse these fees. Before I close, I would like to state that the letter from my lawyer to the county was to notify the county that these fees violate the Wyoming State laws. The letter contained the statutes that govern the electronic records, public records, and the duties of the county clerk. A lawsuit has not been filed. It is our hope that these statutes be carefully read and actually be taken to correct the issue.
Thank you.
And I did give you guys a copy, so you can read it.
Please.
And I don't know if you guys had a copy of the lawyer letter, but I included that as well.
We will definitely have our attorney look at your letter, the letter that was sent to us again, as they are. Thank you. In the process of doing so.
Yep, no problem.
All right.
All right.
And thank you very much.
Any questions?
Go ahead. I tend to agree with everyone you say. And I was underway in polling people that use those, that take advantage of those benefits. But then this issue of the legality of the lawsuit potential came up. But I think you have, the public has a right to question what we did because we funded that with taxpayers' dollars. And I think we need to look at that and make sure we agree with what is being done, whether it's fair or not. And as a commissioner, I will do that. And I will be very vocal at the appropriate time, what I think is fair and what is not fair. I think the benefit, the biggest benefit for that process, people benefiting the most are those people in Dallas and Houston that can look at that from down there. And the people in Sweetwater County should not be the ones that are paying for it. My comment. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you. Any other commissioner? At this time, yeah. So thank you. We will continue to look at.
I would like to respond to that. They've been charging people out of state, but this county paid for those records. We paid for them already, we paid through fees, our taxes, and now we got to pay to use them. It's our, this is for our county.
Believe me, I understand. And this commission will listen, as Mr. Johnson said, to what people have to say, and we will, you know, look at it and then we will do the right thing.
All right. Well, thank you. My biggest, my biggest thing was is that it's been said that this Tyler I-Docs upgrade was all these thousands of dollars, was $3,355 that's in the Tyler Technologies. If you guys would like to copy that, I have some of those too, there's only a couple. And it's absolutely different than the U.S. Imaging, which is, you can't say that that's only affecting or impacting 92 people, that's for this entire county, whether you own a car or a house or property or anything else and sitting in that county office over there. And that scanning and process is for all of us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Enman. Anybody else? Yes, please come forward, identify yourself, who you're with.
My name is Kate Neal, and respectfully, I have never done this before, but it's just an opinion of mine. I think as the government, we are moving forward with technology. Myself, I do everything on paper, that's all. I'm working in an office now where everybody's young, they do everything over the computer with their phone, and as I can see here, you're probably paper. But it's a little bit forward, and I don't think that our young people or any of our companies should be paying for something that our government is doing anyway and should be doing is updating our information. It's the way of the world. I think our government should be paying for that, I think it has been paid. I don't think that, it sounds like a little business proposition to me, and I'm just saying that's just my naive heart. So I would appreciate it if the lawyers, the commissioners, Ms. Lane would really take that into consideration as far as in the.
Thank you. Any other comments, community? Any other comments? Please come up. Identify yourself and who you're with, please. Good morning.
My name is Brian Marinsic. My thoughts on this issue, and I get the idea that the landmen and the guys, the oil guys are accessing this information for free and they're not taxpayers. But if you look at the process of how we access these public documents, and once you get through with digitizing all of them, is the commission aware that right now, okay, if you go to the county clerk's office, it's free to access the documents? You have to pay to print for 50 cents, whatever. And right now, as it stands, if you access the document post 86, those are already digitized and we're digitizing everything pre 82, 86, somewhere around there. Well, right now, if you go down to the county clerk's office and you access something post 86, you get on I-Doc. You actually use their system and use the I-Doc to access it. And so once, I would think that, and all of the county departments that access public records use I-Doc, they log on at the same website. So if you want to use it for free, and once these are all digitized, I'm assuming that everybody is going to access these records through I-Doc. So it seems kind of odd that I have to pay to use the same service for my house to access the document, but if I drive down to the county clerk's office, I'm going to get on their computer and access the same thing and now I don't have to pay. Right? It just doesn't make sense and it adds a cost to me. I have to, right? So that's the point I want to make. Yes, it's unfortunate that some non-taxpayers get to use that service for free, but to penalize us for those guys, it doesn't seem right. And it's counterintuitive that I'm going to log on to the same internet for free if I drive down there, but I can't do it from my house. So that's my problem.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming in. Any other comments? Any other comment? Yes, ma'am. Identify yourself and who you're with.
My name is Mandy Allred.
Thanks, Mandy.
Thank you. I am a trans citizen and have been for 10 years. I did previously use the system. I actually enjoyed how the system worked. You printed off the paper or contacted the county clerk's office, chose a username, chose a password, signed a, signed the release form that you weren't going to be inappropriate or naughty with the information that was provided there. I think that was a pretty good system. I thought it worked well, and I'd like to see that come back. I think we can have access for two other county citizens at zero cost maybe using that system, and those who are out of state would only know of access through I-Docs and paying a fee. I'd like to see that reinstated if possible.
Thank you. Appreciate hearing that. Thank you. Any other citizen concerns at this time? Yes?
My name is Warren Winter and I'm in real estate. I am in real estate. My kind of question or concern on this whole feeding charge source is where did the information or the data come to bring us to that rate? I would like to, I don't know if we could ask you to find that out?
You'd need to visit with the clerk.
With the clerk?
Clerk, yeah. Because she brought it forward.
Okay.
She's the one that has all that information.
Also, I just, I'm personal in my opinion, this kind of feels like double taxation to me. And as a taxpayer, I mean, we all pay taxes, it's getting a little out of hand and crazy. And so I just thought I'd throw that off.
No, we're here tomorrow.
All right.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, appreciate your comment. Any other comments, sir? Brian, you?
Yeah, Brian again. Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question on the clerk imposing that fee?
The clerk's here, she can ask it through the commission and see if she can answer.
I have, I would like to make the suggestion that we allow our county clerk to prepare an explanation to all of these. I mean, you guys are spitting.
I agree.
You're spitting information at us and frustrations at us. I don't know if any of you have actually made an appointment to sit down with our county clerk, but we're kind of the middleman at this point, and we can't respond directly to you because you're directing your frustrations at Cindy at us. And so I would suggest that we allow Cindy to come forward after she's had the chance to like break down your questions, answer them appropriately, and perhaps at the next meeting, be able to address some of these concerns for the public that's watching and those who are in the audience as well.
And I'd put the spin on that, it's important to have the questions, it's important to have them answered, but at this point in time, we need to involve our legal department, our deputy county, so he can advise and guide because there is that notice of possible legal action that's been served. And we have to pay respect to that and make sure how this is handled does not interfere with that type of thing. So be very important, yes, get the questions, get them to Cindy, make an appointment, and we've got some of them here. Yes, with, work with the attorney's office, you'll get them put together and then at some point in time, present them, but only after guidance from the legal department. Fair enough?
It's fair, but actually my questions go specifically to what you just said, which is, or my questions, I have actually several. So she, the county clerk imposed the fee. And are all our elected departments clerk, treasurer, assessor allowed to implement any fee they want at the rates that they want? Is that, that I think the question, I'm posing that question to the commission.
Then that would be a good question. You pose that.
Because I would think a fee that.
Right, yeah. Just to answer your question, Ryan, is, that question's been brought up, I think, earlier in the questioning that Ms. Enman has, you know, where is that? I think it's only fair for us before we say yes or no on that. I mean, historically, I can tell you where I think the commission's been with regard, but I think we need to take a look, visit with our legal department and guide some, you know. Not going to say anything either way at this point in time because I think it's the wrong thing to do, but I think it's a good time to listen. What are your questions?
So that, that's the question is.
And that question is, they're directly to the clerk's office, but whatever the answer is, it'll reflect all the other elected officials, yes.
The process for any of our elected officials to impose fees on the public. Are they free to impose whatever fee they would want, right? Because property tax information is online. Can the treasurer impose a fee for us to access that, right? The planning department zoning regulations are published, can they impose a fee to access those? The GIS mapping server, that gets used by a ton of people, by, especially out of state, right? I don't even know which agency.
No, it's opening up the county office.
Right. So that is a question I would like to answer, the process. Where is the public's opportunity to discuss those fees when they're implemented? If it's not through a public meeting?
Go ahead. Mr. Winter made a very good observation. He says, double taxation. And I'd take that a little further and it answers your question. Double taxation with representation, and we are your representatives. I understand that, and we, we're charged with looking at that. We're the ones that authorize the monies that were spent for that. We have a problem with this and we need to answer for it. I think it's a good idea that Lauren's had, let, she knows what all these questions are, let the clerk answer those questions, but I, I'm not going to dodge the bullet. That bullet hits me right between the eyes, I understand that, and I think it needs to be answered, and we need to be involved in that decision. That's my opinion, they may not agree with me, but that's my opinion.
Thank you.
And Mr. Johnson, I'll just say it sitting here is, it needs to look into it exactly, get the questions, we need to involve the right people, and we need to answer. Yes, that's why we're all elected and why we're sitting here, you hit the nail right on the head. Not any one of us, have I heard, are reluctant to answer any of or accept responsibility for it. What we're hearing is, let's do it right, let's not shoot from the hip, and let's get the questions to the clerk where the clerk then can begin to work and get those answered, as well as, we do need the input, but we've got to move along in such a fashion that we do not impede what's already been started with a notification through, by attorneys to our attorneys, because that's a whole nother aspect. But it doesn't mean we still can't move forward and look at those things. Fair enough?
Yeah, it is fair. Is there, and I understand this is a very broad question, but is there any way to get some sort of idea on a timeline on this? Because we don't want it to become a legal issue.
But it already somewhat has, so I'm going to refer to our attorney on, when you talk timeline. John DeLeon, our deputy county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I expect that, I think our hope is that by the next meeting or the one after that, we should be in a position to be able to have Cindy kind of go through these questions. So I'm hoping it's the next meeting, but I could see where we'd be moving on after.
Without that, right, we have to keep coming to every meeting, right?
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Well, yeah, right, you see what I mean?
Okay. Well, and here's where I'm at with it, is I think it's important enough that it'll be an agenda item, so you don't have to keep coming to every meeting unless you want to have a concerned citizen. You're welcome to come and we want you here. But again, too, it's going to be an agenda item from my standpoint, if you watch the agenda, that's time to show up.
All right.
We'll definitely hit it, but I do encourage, you're welcome to come, just like you came today, and we're glad to have you, and we are answerable to our citizens of Sweetwater County, period.
We've asked the question, now it's answered.
Yeah, let's get some time, get them answered and get it answered right.
Yep.
Fair enough?
Good.
Thank you. Anything else, commissioners? I'd just like to let you know that I started the process, I was talking, I talked to the title people, I talked to the engineering firms, I talked to realtors, gathering the information, what their opinions, opinions were relative to the fee schedule. But with the threat, and I, I don't think you've made that threat, that's why I'm speaking as much as I am, that threat of lawsuit was not, we were not threatened, just like you said. There's always a possibility of lawsuit, but until that happens, I think I can still speak to that. And I started that process to talk to you people, the ones that are affected. I'm not concerned about Dallas or Houston, I am concerned about you. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. That'll work. Ms. Enman.
I did just want to say, we don't want to file a lawsuit, we want this resolved. That is, that is flat out, we did it to notify it because I had a perception of the laws, I had to have somebody that has. I had to have somebody that has legal authority to say, yep, that's what the law says. We have talked to our legislators, and this is not a legislative matter because they've already said that law's written clearly and supports exactly what I've been saying. So we don't want a lawsuit. We want this to be resolved, and we want you guys to resolve it.
Yeah. Very good.
I just wanted to, I wanted to push at it, and it's going to be resolved a lot quicker if we do it this way than having to do something like that.
I agree.
I really don't want to get into that.
And everybody here agrees with that, I believe.
Okay. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, any other citizens' comments? Why? Okay, identify yourself, please.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to interfere with the top subject that you're on. I want to talk about something else real briefly. So if this has to do with what you're doing...
Yeah, I think...
I'm on the same topic.
Okay, very good. Miss, identify yourself when you get up here, please.
My name is Emily Lopez. I own High Country Realty. I'm also on the City of Rock Springs Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm very new to being involved in that and understanding how these processes work. I'm not politically experienced, but one thing that happens when we have those meetings on planning and zoning with an issue that's contentious is we do public notices. The public has a chance to come and say, here's how we feel about it. So it's not that, and I have talked to Cindy Lane. She was very helpful. I spoke to her on the phone. She walked me through the system. I tested it out and was able to see it didn't meet the needs that it met before. I really did speak to her at the end of the conversation. I said, thank you for your time. We agree to disagree. And because of that, you know, it's not that we're attacking you guys, it's just that you're who we have to go to. You're our representatives, and we didn't have that process before to come and say, hey, I'm not saying it's anyone's fault that it was implemented. It sounds like it went live before it was supposed to on purpose, or not on purpose, on accident, but because we didn't have that opportunity to come to you guys then, now that's why we're doing it now, and you're who our representatives are. So I have talked to Ms. Lane, but I don't agree, and so that's now why we're coming to you guys and asking you to take into consideration the things we have to say. We want that access to that public information we had before. I worry about someone in Farsen, who, our county is huge. Sweetwater County is so big, so to have to come to the courthouse to have access to the records you need between 8:00 and 5:00 Monday through Friday, if you work a traditional job, you're taking a day off of work to do that. So I think that's very important that our county has access to that information, and we are coming to you guys because we didn't have the opportunity to do that before, and pleading to you as our representatives. So it's not an attack, it's just you're who we know we can go to. So I appreciate you guys. It seems like you're really taking it into consideration and looking at it, and I appreciate you guys hearing our voice, and I hope you'll continue to look at it and remove the fee so our county has access to those records we have access to for 10 years. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other comments with dealing with the fees for, that are being charged out of clerk's office? We'll finish that one up. Any other comments, public comments? Yes?
I'll just say one comment real quick on this. I born and raised here in Rock Spring, Wyoming, and I love it here.
Would you, your name, please, and who you're with?
Benjamin Clark.
And who you're with?
I'm just here as a good citizen.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
One of the thing about having to deal with technology, I can honestly say that's why I retired from the military with 21 years, is because I couldn't keep up with the technology. So the fees and everything, that's what everything's going to is technology, and for us to be charged as citizens to come and look at anything that we want to that says public record, we should be allowed that right to look at that and not be charged that, charge the fee that we need to look at just a little chunk of land that we're interested in or something. So just, I appreciate everybody here for that, for that thing, for the technology and all that, the things that's going on now.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate your comment.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone else like comment on? Keith? With that, other comments? Mr. Slaughter?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick update. I wanted to brief you. At your meeting December 2nd, you had chosen US Bank to move forward with our lease revenue issue for the buildings out through the jail site. And subsequent to that meeting, it was brought to my attention that the county does not own those properties. Shocked to me, could have used several of these real estate agents to tell me that at this point in time. I assume...
We got the system out? We got this IDOC system out?
It just didn't make sense to me that we have built $30 million on property that we didn't own, so I didn't even consider that. But nonetheless, that threw a wrinkle into our ability to use the lease revenue issue moving forward. So I've been working with our bond attorneys, our other advisors with respect to how we move forward with this, along with the bank, because their agreement was that we would do this, and their original proposal was up through the 10th of December. So what we've done, we've extended that. I've talked with Mr. Legursky after talking to Commissioner Johnson extensively about properties and things of that nature. But what currently is the situation is BLM has ownership of those properties. There is also some state of Wyoming issues that are on this property we're talking about. In talking with Mr. Legursky, he's told me that he believes that we should have this taken care of hopefully by the first part of March. So we have had US Bank come back, look at their proposal, and make sure that they would be willing to continue with their offer to fund that project for us. They did make one minor change. The original proposal they made was for 2.06% annual rate on their loan. They changed that to 2.09%. I felt like that was very minimal, but we then asked them to extend that through the 15th of March. I do have a copy of an offer from them to extend that through that period, and we're continuing to work through that. So I just want to be all be aware that that is, we're working on that, and we are aware of what that issue is.
Does that offer need to be signed by us?
I don't believe so at this point in time. It came actually through Steeple, our representative. They forwarded on to me at this point in time, and it is viable on 3/5.
That's the only question I have. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, just, you know, here again, you walk into, oh, I went through that already. But we're aware of that. Gene has been working on that, but we're after a 50-year lease on that is what we've had before. The only reason this didn't come up in the past on these others is we paid cash. That makes a world of difference. You don't have to deal with banks and that, and we all still have that opportunity to fall back and to fund that ourselves if something happens with that. Appreciate what you're doing, and Gene's been working on it, and I think it's going to be resolved. You said something that's a little different, though. Gene, was there a issue with the state? I didn't think there...
No, we should have an MOU before you guys, the first meeting in February.
Is there a state section?
AG's office right now.
There is a state section in there?
Non-state section. It's a white dot plant site lease on the BLM section.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, commissioner.
With this change, do we need to involve again a First Bank or somebody else to put it again for another opportunity? Is it's not enough of a change?
That's a good question.
Mr. Chairman, that was exactly the situation that I brought to Steeple at that point in time, is I said, you know, we would want to look at this. We may need to open this back up to each of the banks. What they suggested is, let's go back to US Bank, see what they're willing to do. And the conversations that I had with them when it came back with three basis points difference of what it was previously, I told them I didn't feel like that was significant. Our other bid was 2.32%, I believe, off the top of my head. Still significantly less than what that was. So I didn't think three basis points was going to really affect things at that point in time. So I didn't believe that we needed to bring it back up to another RFP at that point in time. That was my decision. If I overstep my bounds, we can always go back and redo that, but I didn't think that that was enough of a change to worry about.
Tim, babe?
Then he did discuss that with me, and I agree with him at that point in time. I don't say that that's significant, based on the fact we're still old.
Yep. Okay, very good. Okay with that? All right, any other questions, Brian? No? Any other concerns, citizens' concerns? Any others? Yes?
Are these concerns just for this topic, or is it for other things?
You mean this open session?
Well...
Citizens' comments?
Yes.
Yeah, this is for anything.
Okay. Again, my name is Kate Neal, former employee of Southwest Counseling Service. The insurance was increased 20% passed on to the employees. I think that that was a horribly big jump that we didn't know about as a company, but we didn't have time to budget for, or anything else. I think we should consider some kind, I don't know the right words, an amendment. I just think that people should be able, if you knew we were going up 20% in insurance, it would have been nice for us to figure out some way to deal with it besides passing it on to our employees. We need money, we need money to hire our employees, to keep them going. We need insurance. You give them a 1%, 2% raise, you increase their insurance on top of what they're paying 20%. I think that should be considered, and maybe we can do something about that.
Thank you. I just will, one comment I would make on that is I believe our HR department has been in, was in contact with the different entities. I don't, can't tell you exactly how soon. We were notified probably around, after the budget year came in or right near to plan for a possible 20% due to prescription.
Possible.
Yeah, and that's what it turned out, and other entities were notified. That's the best I can tell you from out of our HR department.
I'm not saying we weren't notified. I'm just saying that if, in a timely manner with your budgets, I mean, it's a huge thing. You can't, I can't even imagine how you do it. I'm just saying that if we would have known possibly, yes, possibly 20%, but you usually think 5. I mean, you're passing it on to the employees of the county, and insurance is such a big thing right now, that I think we really need to be careful about our employees paying so much that they're, I'm not saying poverty, but I mean, to keep insurance for your family if you're a single mother or a single father or anything, it's just a big increase.
Thank you. Thank you for that. We appreciate it. Yes?
Well, I agree with you completely. I understand that. Just want to clarify that the entire cost was not passed on to the employees.
No.
The cost to the county was also 20%.
Right. I agree with that.
So the premium, the entire premium cost went up, so did the premiums of the employees.
Yes.
Understand that.
A lot of employees.
Mm-hmm. Sure. Thank you. Go ahead.
So as previous work in the nonprofit, we always built in 20% just as a safeguard, but I would turn that back to Southwest Counseling or any of these agencies that are struggling. If you feel that it's something that you need to come talk to us about per your budget, per your, you know, how your business is functioning, please come share that with us, because we, you know, we don't want our employees or any of our agency employees that, the agencies that we, you know, represent, we don't want those to be struggling, to make ends meet.
We are struggling. Everybody is struggling.
So come forward, you know, as a proposal, as, you know, something that could actually, you know, solve the problem and, you know, and address it with us, and we can, we can work through those issues because we have been approached by other entities, and we have, we are working through those issues, so.
And I just want you to know that I am, I am speaking as a citizen. I am not speaking for a board member of Southwest Counseling. I'm just, that's what I'm saying, that it, as a citizen.
Thank you.
And I just wanted the folks to know, you know, if there's other agencies listening that are struggling with the same thing, that we are willing to listen, and we are willing to address those issues, so.
All right. Thank you. Any other concerns?
Hi.
All right, identify yourself.
I'm Mary Manataus. I'm resident in Sweetwater County, over 40 years. My husband's born and raised here. We've paid taxes all these years. Our taxes go to, and I am going to beat the dead horse. I'll take two minutes, because I want to give you my spin on it, is that we do pay taxes. Now, comments are made that some people in the community in Sweetwater County do not even understand or know what IDOCs are, okay? And I understand that, and that's fine. My taxes I've also paid for fire services, fire suppression and loan enforcement. Well, you know what? I haven't used those services either. My children have been out of school for years. My taxes are still paying for all of these things, and I'm grateful to say that I haven't needed these other services, but that doesn't make them less important. So what happens is when you go out and the fire truck needs an update, do you then charge the next people that have a fire to put out? Do you charge them for the update? I feel like the people that are using IDOCs are being charged for updates. This is all part of the county, the budget. This is all our money. This is where it needs to be overseen as to if things need to be done, you've got budgets for it. We're getting, a select group that uses this service are getting hit with it. So with that, should people who use other county services be invoiced too? I'm just, I wanted to put another different twist on this. We are being double taxed, the people that are paying taxes and that are using the service. I totally disagree with this. I respectfully request that you guys do, as a commission and as representatives of our county, look into this and then realize that you can overturn what has been done. I understand people have talked to Ms. Lane directly. I have not. I'm just talking as a citizen, looking at it just very basically, factually. I paid once for this. Now you're telling me after 10 years of using it for free, that all of a sudden I've got to pay again. Where's the line? Get drawn in the sand with all improvements that people are going to be charged again for things that we are, have been paid for already.
Thank you. Thank you. Mary, good job. Okay, one more time. Any other citizens' concerns? Any other citizens' concern? I'll do, I'll pause. The session's closed. Now, I normally really take a break, commissioners, but we do have a phone call on TAB, got a little finding again, TABF with his request for approval to appoint a circuit court magistrate. That's a phone conference, so I would like, Sally, could we get phoned in to Judge Procost? I want, and while she's doing that, I want to tell everybody, thank you for being here. We appreciate it. We do our best to represent you, and we will continue to do so, and this matter will not just be brushed away.
Thank you.
Will not be. You have our commitment to that. Thank you.
Hello?
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning. Hello? This is Chairman Widdley.
Good morning, and with us we have Chairman Shainfield, Chairman Johnson, Chairman Smith, and Chairman Lloyd, and...
Oh, the chairman.
Yeah, we're all the chairmen. Thank you. But anyhow, commissioners as well. But anyhow, go ahead. The floor is yours with regard to a request for approval to appoint a circuit court magistrate. We do have a letter in our packet, and I'll turn it forward to you.
Why, thank you. Chairman Widdley, commissioners, appreciate the opportunity. You'd be allowed to appear by phone. It does help with the schedule, and my driving is somewhat limited presently, probably for the safety of all our citizens. But you, the letter is fairly self-explanatory. When we appoint magistrates here in the circuit court, we're required to come to the commission and have the commission approve that. We simply are complying with statute. When we appoint magistrates here in the circuit court, we're required to come to the commission and have the commission approve that. We simply are complying with statute. This doesn't cost the county anything. Its magistrates are in fact paid. It comes out of the state's budget. The district court has something similar. They're called district court commissioners, but they don't have to come to you folks to get that person approved. We use magistrates, for example, if, you know, a judge wakes up one morning and is too ill to come to court, a magistrate comes in and does just some of the basics to keep things moving for us. This is a pretty common process all across the state. And we have made the request for Ed Newell to be approved. He is Judge Robinson's staff attorney upstairs and he also acts as a commissioner for her. If he is approved, it does have a benefit for us in that because he would probably be coming to assist us and he's already on the state payroll, if you will, we don't have to pay him separately. So it's kind of a win-win for everyone.
Great.
Any questions?
Any questions, commissioners?
I like win-wins.
Huh?
I like win-win.
Yeah. Everyone likes a win-win, Judge, so there's no questions, commissioners. What's your pleasure?
Chairman, I move that we approve the request to appoint a circuit court magistrate.
Okay. We have motion by Commissioner Smith to approve a circuit court magistrate. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations, Judge.
Thank you all very much for your support on this and we'll get a copy of that resolution and move forward. Thanks for the time, folks.
Thank you for your time. With that, with that in mind, we'll go back to our agenda and we will recess. We want 10 minutes, commissioners, and we will recess here, let's just say at 10:30 and we'll start off with tab E, which is a discussion regarding the incident communication response. So, okay? Ready?[573.41]
I have a meeting back to order after the break and we'll go back to our agenda and at this time we'll go to, went the wrong way on my agenda. We will go to Tab E which is Discussion Regarding the Sweetwater County Incident Communication and Response Plan. And Ms. Lane, I believe you're presenting now?
I am.
Thank you.
Okay, so for the upcoming election year with elections being under the critical incident of the homeland security, each county has to have a critical incident plan in place. It kind of came out late December and there was confusion on whether I had to go through the county commissioners or not. So I did, they did extend the deadline for me till January 31st and a few others because I didn't go through a meeting. But it doesn't necessarily need to, but I wanted to keep you in the loop of what's going on with it. So I did sign the packet. We can't make changes. We just had to have one in place. So today's just an informational meeting on that. If you notice with it, we don't have a logo in there yet. I don't know what logo we want to use for it. I did go through the packet and change it to say Sweetwater County instead of Putcher County here when I first got it. So I would like your involvement into look over it and see if there's anything using would be different if there was a critical incident, say Russians hack our computers. That's what they're looking at. They're looking for the countries that may try to influence the election by attacking our election process. So if you look through it, you see any changes, let me know. We can add those in there and then I can send it to the Secretary of State's office where it is on file. But it's currently on file. My signature is saying that we have one in place. So that is-
And Ms. Lane, Clerk Lane, you say there, as we review it, there's opportunity to change it. So it's just really kind of a living document which can be changed as we-
It can change as we go. We just need to then file, you know, let the Secretary of State's office know that we have a different one on file.
Changes to it.
And then I'll probably have to sign a new one, which is fine. I just needed to get that done and then to show that Sweetwater County has something in place for this election. In there, there can be an overview. If something happens, here's a letter you can put out or here's a press release you can put out. Who do you have access to that PR during the elections through the Secretary of State's office as well? They kind of give you some, like if the power all goes out in the city and you can't, you know, run anything and it doesn't come back up, what do you do, things like that. So it just gives you all kinds of ideas. But yes, if it's a living document, if you want to change it, we can. You've got to find a county logo to put on there and make it, which one, I'm not sure which one to fill in right now. There's several. But that's it. The information wants to be known where we're at with critical incidents and homeland security information.
Commissioner's question. Commissioner Johnson, where did the document come from originally?
Secretary of State's office.
The state did it.
Yep.
It's the same for every county?
It's the same for every county. And you just go, that's why, but there's an opportunity to make it for your county, our county. So if there's something in there that doesn't work, I think some of the smaller counties may have some more issues where they don't have very access to things. We have a backup generator here, things like that. So, but yes, it came from the Secretary of State and we have the opportunity to ours. It's just an outline.
So and it only requires your approval?
Yes.
Other commissioners comments? Very good. So what's the next steps? Did you say one more time?
There really aren't any. Unless you have-
Changes.
Changes, there's no next steps. So I need to put a logo on the front page. I do not have to send the paperwork back to the Secretary of State, just my signature on the signature page that as the head election officer that we have a critical incident in place.
Any formal action need to be taken on it?
No.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners? All right, I would thank you.
All right.
Appreciate you sharing it.
I was sharing it.
Yeah? Very good. Appreciate, appreciate the work you did on that.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go right on to Tab G which is Approval of the 2020 Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Subrecipient Grant Agreement. Mr. Legursky's here. Because Ms. Marshall is ill, let's kind of see how much money you can bring into the county instead of spending it.
Again, Christina brought it in. I'll just spend it on the back end. So I'd like to apologize to Christina who's watching this from home. I'll try to do the best job I can, but she gave me some good instructions.
Very good.
What this is, is that Sweetwater County was awarded $310,803 of federal CMAC grant funding from their riding department transportation. The grant awards are required to match at 20% and expire December 31st, 2022. The purpose of the CMAC funding is to alleviate air quality issues created by energy development, other industrial activities within the vicinity. And what we applied for is to MacLaurin, 103.5 miles of Sweetwater County. That is not all that we do in the county. That's just all based on the funding available that we could receive. We'll put a bigger project together in conjunction with this than all the roads we typically do. The required cash match for this project was included in the grants project budget and now require a budget amendment. So what we're asking for is a move to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the fiscal year 2020 congestion mitigation air quality subrecipient grant agreement.
Okay, very good. Questions from the commissioners for Mr. Legursky? No questions here. We do this every year, of course. And money this year, more or less than last year?
A little bit less.
A little bit less.
Unfortunately, another couple of counties decided to jump on board. It's a lot differently though.
Okay, very good. All right. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and authorize the chairman to sign the fiscal year 2020 congestion mitigation and air quality subrecipient grant agreement as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. Thank you. And we'll move on to, the next one is, this, discussion of a new storage building for the Sweetwater County Weed and Pest District in Pharson. Again, Mr. Legursky, who do you have with you?
I'll let him introduce himself.
Very good. You're yourself, sir.
Hello, Chairman. I am Dan Matson, supervisor for Sweetwater County Weed and Pest. Pleasure to be with you and Board of County Commissioners. Been working with D. Legursky on a project for Sweetwater County Weed and Pest, trying to clear up a little lease line discussion. I've been busy about that.
Is it an overhead bounce?
No.
Who's going to bring up a-
Do you have us?
Yeah.
Do you want us to put it on? Hang on. I gotta push the right button so you get that. There you go.
(laughing)
He's dangerous.
That'll make it a little bit easier to discuss what we're talking about. So on the site plan, if you guys look, let me see if I can move this. That line right there and this line right here are described in a lease from 1975. It's a lease line. And basically the lease doesn't require any money from the Weed and Pest. It just describes an acreage. And it says that they have quiet enjoyment. It goes back and forth where everybody's responsibilities are. As you can see, their new proposed shop building is actually over the lease line. And in talking to Dan, talking to Chuck Radosevich, I reached out to him, nobody can exactly figure out why that lease line was there. It was back before Sweetwater County owned it, but it was back before when this shop was actually the ambulance and fire up there. So we don't know exactly why that lease line was there. What we would like to do with your guys' permission is to amend that lease line and not even have it, and then have an MOU between Sweetwater County Weed and Pest and the Sweetwater Board of County Commissioners that allows them to use the land with your guys' permission like we are now. Any buildings, any infrastructure, anything like that to come before you guys and see if you guys are okay with that. The lease line, as far as I can tell, doesn't mean anything. It's just a line that was drawn on a map, maybe to make sure that everybody was controlled in a certain area. The new building as proposed will not affect any of our operations which are down here. Our existing lease building, everything is in this vicinity. So it will not affect anything that we currently do.
Very good.
And we would like to put that building there for the purpose of equipment storage and chemical storage. So it's not a, it's not going to-
Non-man.
Yes, non-man building. I've included a picture in your packet of what that's going to look like. The funding for it will come out of our regular budget process. There won't be any additional cost or funding. It's something that we're going to take care of with the money that we already have.
All right, so if I recall correctly, do you have to do an amendment to the original agreement for these lines first?
We're going to work through the MOU process and see if we can do that and get all of that before they can officially build the building.
Okay.
But they would like to know how the process is going to work so they can get on with planning it and, you know, advertising for contractors and getting the building secured.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
What I suggest is we just authorize the abandonment of that money. Authorize the chain to go forward with whatever is required.
And that would be, okay, so, you know, dealing with just a line, not this agenda item, because this agenda item is to prove the plan for the building, am I correct?
Correct.
So we'll get two, two things right now. So first off, I would entertain a motion as said by Mr. Johnson to address that line.
Why don't we address the lease because it actually is two lines. It's one on the west and one on the east side of the property.
How would you like that motion?
Where's Christina when you need her, Eugene?
She's watching over your shoulder.
She's watching over your shoulder.
And this lease does actually not have a lease number on it. But you'll say the lease, the lease lines as it pertains to the lease section of the Weed and Pest District, something like that. You can make this on the list in order.
I doubt it. I'm no engineer.
All right, so if I can read you correctly, motion to address the lease line.
The lease lines.
Within the-
Sweetwater County property as it pertains to Sweetwater County Weed and Pest.
Weed Pest.
Sorry, Weed Pest.
All right. Did you get that motion, Sol?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Second.
That was made by, that motion was made by Commissioner Smith, right?
Yes.
And seconded by Commissioner Johnson?
Correct.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So let's get that addressed. Now let's go back to your original agenda item with regard to approving the concept plan for the new storage building.
Yes, I fully support this. You know, I don't know all of Dan Matson's process where he goes up there. So, and I can't speak to that, but they've been very cooperative with us, helping us do a lot of good work out on the roads and stuff like that. This will not affect our occupancy of our building or anything that we currently do up there. So I leave it up to you guys to approve or not.
Okay. Commissioners, questions on the concept plan? Mr. Smith?
Are we going to be sad any number of years down the road that they have this space and we wanted for something else?
No. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, and then with that, Commissioners, I'd entertain a motion to approve the concept plan for the new storage building for the Weed and Pest District to be located on Sweetwater County property in Pharson, Wyoming.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Discussion? None. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Got a question before-
Go ahead.
Chairman, what are you doing about ravens these days?
As of right now, Sweetwater County Weed and Pest's agreement for our declaration for that as a pest expired. The Weed and Pest Council had that as a declared pest for five years. That expired this past year in 2019. And we have turned that over to the Better for Board as well as to USD Wildlife Service, U.S.D. Wildlife Services. And they have agreed to run that within their funding scope. For that five years, our projected plan was to establish a program and fund the creation of that program so that they could then see how it worked, where it worked, and if it was effective. And then it was agreed to turn that back over to them. And so it seemed a better fit, Mr. Johnson, just because within the Weed and Pest, all we were was a money funneling agency. We had no legal opportunities or rights to control the ravens. So it really took everything out of our hands. All we were doing was throwing money. So that's where we are right now. We currently have one.
So it's not a dead issue as far as you know?
No, as far as I know, it's not a dead issue.
One of the things that I, as known on me, is that the issue of ravens, if we were to attack the crows, you know, it's hard for the, tell the difference. And I think we should attack the crows. If a few ravens get attacked, that's their problem.
That's afraid of crows.
Crows are not protected.
Creative. And when we get up and we inspect the beaks and the wings of a raven.
I'm sorry, that's all you do.
Same thing.
Anything other?
Got to take care of the message.
Any other questions? Anybody else? All right, thank you. Thanks for being here. Have a good one. Appreciate your work you do. Okay, the next item on the agenda is an easement with Rock Springs Grazing Association for a portion of County Road 21, Bar X Road. Mr. Legursky, you're on.
What this is, is a, like Chairman said, for a portion of County Road 21, the Bar X Road. This was actually money that we received through the Gateway West Project to reconstruct this road and actually widen. When we were in the design phase, we realized that we did not have an easement from Rock Springs Grazing on the portion of land. So we couldn't do anything. After a lot of work between Mr. Bailey Omen and the Rock Springs Grazing Association, we finally have a lease in front of us for a whole entire 100-foot wide easement which we need in that area for wind and everything. I got to be able to construct it correctly.
Very good. Questions, Commissioners? No questions. You will look at this and I'll entertain a motion to approve the easement with Rock Springs Grazing Association for a portion of County Road 21, Bar X Road, and allow the chairman to sign all necessary documents. Am I correct, Mr. Legursky?
Yes, sir.
Got a motion?
Yes, sir.
No, no. Motion by whom?
By Roy.
Okay, a second by, okay, by Commissioner Shanefield. Discussion? No discussion. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next, next up is the DEQ permit authorization for reconstruction of the tertiary water line that feeds Crossroads Park. Mr. Legursky?
What this is, is Wydon, a couple of years ago, you guys know, interchange road, the bridge that's been dead over the interstate for four, five, six years. There you have been working on a project with the city of Rock Springs to completely redo that bridge, full-fledged intersection, something like that, and actually take it through the wastewater treatment pipe area almost over the Blairtown building. It's a big project. It's going to be in April this year. As part of that, I came before this board because we had to redo some of the tertiary water line that actually feeds the irrigation system up there. Case of realigning or something like that because of this project. But this is a DEQ application. It has to go before DEQ up at Lander so that they can approve the water line and the water line plans. So it needs to be kind of signed by a member of the board.
Commissioners, questions? Any issues with it as far as you know?
No, there's not. The only issue, we just don't know the construction cost. I didn't tell them bids in April, what it will be. And that's unfortunate. We know about what it is, but we were able to take care of some, a couple drainage problems and stuff like that in low-lying areas and re-slope the line so it drains better.
Do you know what the total appropriation is for the modification of the overpass? Any chance?
Off the top of my head, I want to say it's 36 million, but I couldn't be honest. Mid to upper 36.
But the funds are available?
Funds are available.
So I have that.
Yeah, matter of fact, Thursday, we will be doing the final plan review with everybody that's affected by that.
Okay, very good. Any other questions, Commissioners? With that, no questions. I'll entertain motions to approve the DEQ permit authorization for reconstruction of the tertiary water line that feeds Crossroads Park and allow the chairman to sign all necessary documents.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Johnson. Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Discussion? No discussion. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, again, is a discussion on reducing the retainage from 10% to 2.5% for the Salt Wells Bitter Creek Crossing project. Ms. Legursky?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you guys know, the Bitter Creek Crossing project was completed December 13, 2020. It was put into substantial protection. The only thing that was not done as far as that project was the CD. We just couldn't do it. I mean, it was, ground was too frozen, which is obvious in December. So when Rocky Benardi and I were talking, he said, you know, I have a lot of bills to pay. Is there any way we could reduce the retainage on that? And I said, I don't know. I have to bring it before the board. And basically what it is, they have about $5,800 worth of work that needs to get done in the spring. And reducing it to 2.5% still leaves $4,000, just in case that they don't do anything. I have received the lead release waivers from all of their major suppliers, along with P. Benardi, that they've paid all their bills up until the release of the retainage portion of it. So that we're covered by that. When we release this, we still have to go through the advertising period of 41 days at the 2.5% period. But right now, I feel fairly confident that they've paid all their bills with their major suppliers and there isn't anything hanging out there.
Commissioners, questions? None whatsoever? Okay, with no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve approval of reducing the retainage on the Salt Wells Bitter Creek Crossing project from 10% to 2.5% and allowing the public works directors to pay the difference in the released retainage to the prime contractor, D. Benardi Construction Company Corporation.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Apologize, I forgot the discussion part. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Legursky. Thank you for your time, sir. Okay, next up, we have a request to replace a vacant position.
No, you got the UNR.
I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. Request to approval of the UMR plan document, stop-loss gap letter for calendar year 2020. Mr. McLean?
We're flexible. We'll take them when they need them.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, as you probably know by now, each year after approval of the kind of agreement of the health insurance plan, certain contract documents trickle in over the course of the year. These are a couple of those that need to be signed by the County, the Chairman of the County Commission. The first one is the, first one is the acceptance letter. These are just changes mostly due to regulatory compliance. There's summary modifications with UMR regarding our summary plan document. For everybody's edification, the summary plan document is the document that governs how UMR will pay claims under our health insurance plan. And this letter accepts those changes and authorizes it under the board's chairman's assignment, Commissioner Sullivan.
Okay, questions, Commissioners? With there being no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the UMR plan document, stop-loss gap letter for the calendar year 2020, and authorize the chairman to sign.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Lloyd. Discussion? None. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we're up to the replacement vacant position in information technology.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
There's, there's two, two agreements in there. The one I mentioned is the acceptance page of the modifications to the stop-loss.
Okay.
And the second page is the, as you referred to in your motion, the stop-loss contract type of 1215. I was just taking one at a time.
Okay, so go ahead and do the second one.
Okay. The, the second agreement basically is just notifying that we intend to have a contract type of 1215. Obviously, a stop-loss year is, is fiscal year, calendar year, but obviously it takes a while for claims to trickle in before they can be paid. So we're just notifying with this that we continue to have a 1215 contract about the stop-loss and authorization for the chairman to sign that agreement as well.
Okay. Commissioners, your pleasure?
So moved, yeah.
So moved by Commissioner Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Gary. For that piece. All right, now we go to your request for replacement vacant position in technology. And I have you up as Mr. Knight here today?
He has been detained, but I-
Let's go ahead and you can, you can have.
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, as you recall at the last meeting, I notified the board about a vacancy in our IT group. And the board had authorized, and go ahead and get going with the recruitment, but I'm here today to formally request permission to staff that position. The cost information is contained in the documents in the board packet. I would also note that since the last meeting, we have had a response. And so we have five or six people that have responded to potential applicants for that position already, which is positive, so.
Very good. Okay, questions, Commissioners? No questions. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request to replace a vacant position in the Information Technology Department as presented.
Okay, we got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All righty. Next up will be our sheriff. Sheriff Grossnickel Welkens. Thank you. I believe you're here with regards to the contract between Sweetwater Counseling, Southwest Counseling, and Sweetwater County Sheriff's.
Correct. This is for, I think, the JBX program. It's taken a while. We did this contract with different entities that are involved. We'd like to be, we want sure they would like us to be services and be ready to, to answer any questions.
Okay.
It has been looked at by the County. Uh, it has been looked at by the County, uh, as well as...
That would be a question I had, but it's been answered. Questions, Commissioners? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, just on the signature page, that's gotta be changed somehow, so, but it's already got two signatures on it, so I, I suggest that you just cross my name out, put your name in it.
Okay. We'll make that edit, along with that, so, any other questions? Commissioners, your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Shanefield?
I would like to make a motion, um, that we approve the contract between Southwest Counseling and Sweetwater County Sheriff's Office, um, to continue to perform the services and pay for them and authorize the chairman.
Okay, we got a motion, is by Commissioner Shanefield, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, discussion? I was watching the lips, I'm sorry, Ryan. Discussion?
I'll just be louder.
No discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Boy, I did think of one question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, will this need to be funded annually then? Is this contract just for this year?
This is just for this year.
And, so we'll have to fund it, okay, thank you. We'll forward to that.
Got it all? Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Let your staff know, we appreciate what they do, and we appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on with our agenda, I believe up next is a two thousand nineteen annual report and update from our Sweetwater County Conservation District, and Ms. Tolman and staff are available, please? Come on up and introduce yourselves.
I'm Mary Tolman, Chairman of the Sweetwater County Conservation District, with me I have Randy Schittman, our district clerk, Tom Beres, our, um, Vice Chairman, and we have been building a, a group of associate supervisors, Randy Doer and Randy Shipman are with us today, we appreciate their support.
Thank you.
Randy was also a past member of the board. Oh, excuse me, I gotta get my glasses, 'cause I wanna read something to you.
Thank you for being here, appreciate it. Randy, thanks for joining us.
You're welcome.
Josh, uh, Josh Corsi is also on our board, uh, he has a radio talk show about the Little Mountain program that happened at Broadway at sixteen ninety-one, you should know that. Stephanie Anderson from McKinnon is on our board, and, uh, Jim Dickinson is on our board, I just wanna, I'm not gonna go through the whole report, but it's really important that you understand our mission and our legal statute is to provide for the conservation of the soil and soil and water, resources of discounting and for the control and prevention of soil erosion and for flood prevention for the conservation, development, utilization and disposal of water, and thereby to stabilize ranching and farming operations, to preserve natural resources, protect the tax base, control floods, prevent impairment of dams and reservoirs, preserve wildlife, protect public lands and protect and promote the health, safety and damage of the property of this county. Statute eleven sixteen one oh three, we adopted that also as our mission. So that might help, uh, our major accomplishments, we finished the Bitter Creek project and, uh, that head cut structure, drop structure, and we had two major watershed studies financed by the Water Development Commission to do a comprehensive analysis of our watersheds on the Bitter Creek and east side of Flaming Ridge area, and we, uh, joined a partnership with, uh, Suffolk County to do a watershed study on the, uh, Big Sandy and Little Sandy. So we will have, we do have projects, we, we submit five projects to the small water development projects for the Big Sandy area, and we just completed, uh...
One for Ramsey Village.
And working on another one on Green River, uh, the, over by the, growing the town that, that, that project that we're helping, looking at the small water project funds to finish that project. So we also spend a lot of our time with the public, uh, process, uh, all the BLMEs with Commissioner Johnson, we are in all of those meetings, we formed a coalition of local governments that's been in operation for twenty years, I believe, almost fifteen, twenty years. We meet once a month, we have a, a membership of, uh, five conservation districts and four county commissions. So we comment, have a legal team, a technical team, they comment on every environmental assessment EIS that happens in this part of, part of the state. So that takes up a lot of our time, and while I'm talking about that, we have some really important public service commission hearings, there will be one in Rock Springs on January twenty-ninth from eleven to two at the, uh, Rock Springs City Council, too. So we're gonna help get the word out on that, and that's the part that I wanted to read you. Kemmer is also having one in Lincoln County on the twenty-eighth from four to seven P.M., like their cynics say, if you can't make one, maybe even go to the other. They've got busloads of people's schedules to come in, this is huge, affecting our tax base, local economies, jobs, all of that. It's here, hold on. This is from our legal staff, Connie Brooks and Denver, she did a summary force. In November of two thousand nineteen, the Wyoming Public Service Commission opened an investigation into the Rocky Mountain Power Integrated Resource Plan, IRP, you're gonna hear that word, that proposes accelerated closures for coal-fired power and captive mines in Wyoming. On December twenty-third of two thousand nineteen, the commission consolidated this investigation with the earlier investigation of the coal study that was said to be the basis for the selected coal-fired plant closures. On January sixth, twenty twenty, the commission staff held a scheduling conference and set the hearing date for July thirteenth to July seventeenth. The coal, uh, our coalition, the local governments, we intervened on that on December twenty-third. The public comment periods have been announced and will proceed as announced, it would be very helpful for each community to see that the affected residents attend. While coalition will be developing detailed reasons that the proposed closures are not the least cost, least risk options, the commission will benefit from the perspectives of the residents of the communities who will be most immediately affected. Governor Gordon weighed in on December nineteenth to issue a request for a proposal to conduct an intensive analysis of the data and models. The commission action, the, the public service commission action to review the integrated resource plan is said to be unprecedented in Wyoming. Similar reviews are occurring in Oregon and hearings are held in Utah and Idaho. Our coalition has asked the commission to investigate the coal study last winter and the commission announced its investigation in late June of two thousand nineteen. It is encouraging that we are now at a contested case posture to dig into the actual numbers and impacts rather than endless Rocky Mountain power points that reflect conclusions rather than the data used in the models. This is huge for Sweetwater County. And they've already shut down, uh, two of the, that's correct, is it, why, two at Martin Plant and Kemmer, they've shut down two of the coal fired, and they're proposing to do the same with Jim Bridger.
One next year, right?
Yes. And, uh, it's all being driven by, by the West Coast states that, that want the green power and they want it in separate lines, and, uh, we're gonna pay the price, we're gonna have power outages, uh, the alternate power sources are not gonna fill the gap, and it's gonna hurt our economy, so I just ask all of you to help spread the word and be sure you attend one of those hearings on the twenty-eighth or the twenty-ninth. That's the biggest message I can make with you today. A couple of other things, the solar farms...
Before you leave that, go ahead.
Yeah, Mary, uh, what she's saying is absolutely true, and we've been very active, the coalition's been very active, it's one of the issues, I went to Washington. We need to understand that in Sweetwater County alone, we're talking over eleven hundred jobs. If Rocky Mountain Power has their way eventually, I think we need to protest that, we are protesting that. Twenty-ninth is an important meeting, I feel, uh, quite, uh, disappointed in Sweetwater County's position, not of position, but the, uh, Lincoln County, I think they've said they're gonna have eight hundred people at that hearing in Lincoln County, I don't know how to get around on the twenty-ninth here, but we need to have our people there. I think the, the, I would hope that the union at Bridger would be there, uh, Bridger Coal Company and, and all those Rocky people would be there, because you need to understand how, how extremely important this is to our county. Rocky Mountain Power's wrong, in my opinion, as to the way they're approaching that, they're gonna decommission two of those lines, two of those, uh, at Bridger, and, and what will happen, they'll be cannibalized over the period of time, I don't believe that is the right posture that they should take, they should at least put those on the market to see if there's a willing buyer for them. That will not happen, but we need to push that. The other alternative needs to be looked at, if they don't wanna put, if they don't want them to be coal-fired, they could be gas-fired, that helps us in a different area, takes away from the coal that'll help in another area, but I think the public needs to understand the, the tremendous impact down the road that this is gonna have on Sweetwater County, and we need to be vocal about it. We are, uh, taking this message to our Washington delegation, uh, we've written an extensive report, uh, Mr. Cotton and I, that report went to our, our Washington delegation, uh, the only one that I've seen any action on that came out is the governor finally said something, I think the governor's trying to do finally what he should have been doing quite a while ago, in my opinion, but, yeah, I cannot underestimate, or overestimate, I should say, the impact that this could have on Sweetwater County.
And, uh, I know Mark Cotton's been helping Connie Brooks with, uh, with the facts from this county, if this, what is gonna need to this county?
That's in the letter that we gave to Connie, she's got that letter.
Jobs and dollars and, uh, it's huge, so, I mean, we really need to spread the words and Karen, we're either working on press releases today, get it out to get, uh, we had advertised, but we need everyone that we can possibly get to that, and they haven't had a weird time, eleven to two.
Why do you think that?
Well, we have shift workers, so there's a lot more.
But there, but basically, it's, it's a hearing to take comment from constituents, and this is, so you wanna understand. So, um, are you, Commissioner Johnson?
I tend to be.
You're gonna be there, the other Commissioner? Okay, all righty.
One of the comments they made that I think we need to hear a lot and clear, and this was directed from a key person within Rocky Mountain Power, is we're just, we're just responding to the consumer's preference. Now, you tell me if there's anybody in Sweetwater County that would take that position, that position, when they say consumer preference, is California, Washington and Oregon, that's not, that's not us, it is not in the best interest of Sweetwater County nor the state of Wyoming.
Well, it wouldn't be in their best interest either if they took the power off of the county, state line, I'd say. We're being forced to follow the demands of another population, it's gonna put huge costs on us, we're gonna bear the burden of that, and they will too ultimately, so that's huge, I just wanted you to know about that. The other issue is solar farms, so we got the one solar farm, and we had a huge jam loss with the deer on the highway in December, thousands of deer jammed up behind that solar farm.
Was it aloch, or?
Or aloch, excuse me, it was aloch, sorry.
There's a difference. You know the difference between sheep.
Well, I thought it was sheep, I was... They all have four legs, you know how that is? So Kemper's friends, uh, David Fish has been talking to me and wants to, with them, uh, to see if they can mitigate that, but I don't know what they're thinking about, but the way that was designed, it came into a V, there was no other place for them to go, they said, oh, they can go around it. And we commented, all of us commented through the coalition that we wanted a buffer of, uh, trailing area left through there, domestic sheep herds go along that highway, the, real sheep, not just aloch sheep, and deer, and everything goes through that corridor, and they didn't leave a corridor, they just expected all of the animals to know that they're supposed to go out around. And, um, and now that we're both in a second solar farm, and we're really, you know, the first time we tried to be objective, we thought, well, you know, it's good for the economy and it's good for green power and all this stuff, but this next time we'll be much more vocal, they, they're not willing to provide for all of your water sources of the second one, if they put it on the, uh, east side of that highway, uh, three seventy-two, it's gonna really jam up that corridor between the river and highway three seventy-two, it's already a, a narrow corridor, if they stick, the majority of the second section on that side of the highway is gonna make a bigger impact, and, um, so I just wanted you to be aware of that, to, to stay aware to it. But they need to mitigate what happens with the, you know, that existing solar farm used to mitigate that, somehow to make that passable around that.
Well, the fencing, the fencing actually pushed them right onto the highway.
Well, they made a V, they just forced them right into a corner, so, uh, that was not good.
No.
The next thing, I only got a couple of other things, uh, WLCI, Commissioner Johnson was on the executive board and Chairman, as was I, I still am on the Wyoming Laskin Conservation District Executive Board, we meet in Cheyenne, Cheyenne on January thirtieth, so I may miss that hearing on the twenty-ninth, I don't, I don't know how, how the travel plan's gonna work out. We do projects in nineteen million acres of southwest Wyoming, and, uh, we partner with BLM and all sorts of other agencies to get funded, uh, to put projects on the ground for wildlife and, uh, that's, uh, that's on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, Mary, what was the funding standard for WLCI?
They have promised to keep it at about two, three hundred thousand for the next three years, you know, and things they can do, and they've lost the healthy lands initiative, which gave us priority for like a million, over a million dollars the first few years, so, the funding is tight, it actually is, I've seen funding get tighter on a lot of these things, it makes people find out better and share and work together, and so we've done, we've continued to do major projects by watershed level for that, uh, by Pindell and been finding the new beer initiative, you know, to do the asking treatments, uh, we're working Little Mountain, doing treatments and, and things that are on a bigger scale that get more pardoned, so, we're getting funding from David Fish, from Wildlife Trust Fund, and, uh, Conservation Districts, uh, BLM, so, we're able to do some really great things, and we have a staff who's supported by David Fish, you know, Special Wildlife Service, um, uh, BLM, Conservation, uh, we don't fund it, but the partner bank becomes a full-time person that work, work as a staff to help develop these projects and everything, so, it's been powerful, it's really, it's really exciting. The last thing is the sad news, this is the worst winter I can remember since I was a little kid, that started so early, you know, we've had bad winters before, but they didn't start until now, till February, this one's been going on two months, and as a livestock operator, I can tell you it's severe, you can't even get off the road, can't get off the hog, or even the feed, we're feeding all of our animals full-time, which we're not used to doing that, we used to, you know, we used to forage on, on the desert, so we're in the two years, or two months, it feels like two years, two months of intense feeding that we're already into, and there's, there doesn't seem to be any, any in sight, I see big bunches of aloch and deer, as well as the sheep and cows, Commissioner Johnson.
I didn't say it.
That are desperate for feed, and, I mean, even on the feed ground, I, I got stuck yesterday, just, if you just break through that crust of ice, you know, it's not, it's just impossible to get around, and north of I- eighty, that towards Long Island, it's snowing on the level, it's, it's a little bit cold. So I just, I'm telling you that, there are gonna be severe losses of wildlife, and maybe some ranchers too, I say we probably have to sell one for the sheep to pay for the feed, for the rest of them. So unless you have questions, I don't know if the rest of our board can...
I wanted to make one more comment about that on this power, on the, let the consumer make the decision on how they're gonna do it, if they can do that on, on, on the type of power we're providing, or if it's being provided, the same people can control the water that comes out of Wyoming also, and that's scary, if they, if, if the masses can control what kind of power we get, they can also control where, where our water goes.
Very good, thank you, Tom. Question?
Shipman, do you have anything?
Well, I have a question, as far as...
Excuse me for a minute, that's Randy Shipman with, with Conservation District also.
I think Warren Buffett made it clear about coal and the nation, you know, where he wants this nation to go, but when this meeting occurs, where does school districts one and two stand? Have they?
Well, I...
They have the most to lose.
My position on it is representing all of the people in Sweetwater County, and that's the position they took in Washington. If you're not gonna listen, if you're not gonna listen to a County Commissioner, who are you gonna listen to?
Oh, I agree fully with Mr. Johnson, uh, but when this hearing comes up, it's gonna have eight hundred people or so up in Kemper, it'd be nice to show a pretty good force here as well.
That's the point, I think Kemper's been way ahead of this, even in the state legislature, it's the Kemper, uh, Lincoln County legislators that have been most vocal, thank Kemper, relative to this issue, ours, I have not heard one word from ours.
Yeah, I just agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anything else, Ms. Tolman? Anything else, Mr. Tomlin?
We thank you for your time. If you have questions, I'd go put your contacts in your time. We always like to do an annual meeting to let you know what we're about before we ever had that asking for money. So, we always do appreciate that very much.
Yeah, I'd just like a big one. I, I attend, over the last 14 years, or however long I've been doing this, uh, every meeting that I've been in, these people have been there, and they don't get paid for this. It's all volunteerism, especially Mary. You know, I don't know how many meetings you attend, Mary, but it's more than I do, and I appreciate very much what you and Conservation District does. You're, you're a voice out there, you have an impact. I, I think people tend to listen to you, and I appreciate that very much, and the people in Sweetwater County should appreciate what you do.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate having such a great, more supervisors than staff. Karen was our one staff person, and she does not stand your job, and it's really going beyond me. So, thank you. Thank you, Karen. But we're also bringing on more supervisor, associate supervisors, who are volunteers to help us with our projects here, so we really, really appreciate your volunteers.
You did a good job.
So, thank you for having me here today.
Just don't leave. Commissioners, any other Commissioner comments? Really, anybody? Okay, just one more thing. For the next Conservation District, is the workshop still planned to have the conversation and information presented from the little, I believe it's Little Snake River Conservation District regarding, uh, boundaries?
Mm-hmm.
That's still intended to take place at?
Yes, we're having, thanks for reminding us.
Okay.
At two o'clock on February 6th, Thursday, our meeting day, we're having a board session at two o'clock with Kent Philammon, the survey, surveyor who has worked with us through the county's funding, of course, to develop a massive database of this county. We know every road trail track in this county. We know every, uh, migration corridor, drop of boundary, anything you want to know about this, uh, Harry, uh, Sage grouse, all of the information that we needed to be able comment effectively on those resource management plans is in that database. Kent Philammon will be there to present the database, and then we'll have a discussion of how best to store and make it accessible without, some of the stuff be decisional because of the Rock Springs Resource Management Plan, how to, how to protect that confidentiality until it goes public. So, we'll have discussion on that. And then Little Snake is, uh, Conservation District has approached us about doing, uh, a possible boundary change. And it doesn't require permission approval, but we want the commission to fully evolve and know what is being proposed. I don't, we haven't taken a position as a board. They're seeing that their mill levy has gone down, but we have all of Eastern Sweetwater County that has a potential huge mill levy base. If they could take and expand their boundary into Sweetwater County, they probably could get a mill levy, uh, approved. That would have to have permission approval to do a ballot to, uh, get the vote of the people who would be in Eastern Sweetwater County. Little Snake is already doing a lot of work in Sweetwater County. We have an MOU with them. They have a fully prepared staff that has done a lot of water development projects and other kinds of projects, because a lot of the producers that live in Little Snake or Hardin County operate in Eastern Sweetwater. So, that's, that's their rationale for wanting to, uh, propose a boundary change. So, thank you for...
Yeah, and the commission is inviting, the commission, I did invite the commission at the last meeting about pending if they wanted to.
I would have it this time, because it will give you a greater understanding of the county, what's in it, what we do, its power.
Just one comment, two comments, one on each of those that we bring. First one, I, I think some of that information's pre-decision.
Yeah.
But I, I do think eventually that database should be in the county. That should be, be controlled and available to the county, not the Conservation District. We paid for that, we appreciate what the Conservation, Conservation District's done, but it should be housed in the county.
Well, there's not a question about that. It's just, you put it on the cloud, or do you move it to the county, or how, how do you do it most effectively, so our legal team also can access it as we need it? So, it's not a problem. You know, we know that the county...
Okay. And, and on the second, the issue I think is going to affect Sweetwater County, because when you give, when you give up some of that base, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul, and Paul doesn't live in Sweetwater County. And, and we've got to be very careful about that. I don't think we need to debate it yet, but I just point out that, that I appreciate Little Snake, they do a great job, but I appreciate you people more, and I think that, uh, those resources should stay in Sweetwater County.
We haven't taken a position.
I know. You and I have talked about it, and we're like, but these, these people aren't even aware of what's going on, and they need to, they need to know what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other comments, other commissioners, before we move on? I can only echo the same comments Commissioner Johnson did, appreciating the work you've done and all the work you do, and you're there, you're there for us more than I think anybody realizes, and we appreciate everything you guys do, and each and every one of you. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
We appreciate your enthusiasm and your dedication to coming to and supporting us. So, thank you.
Just glad to be a part of it, because you guys do a great job. Thank you. Have a good day. Okay, moving on, Tab P. Uh, Rock Springs Chamber of Commerce is here to talk about the consent, the census, 2020 census, and to request some funding. And with us is Mr. Lee.
Rick Lee with the Rock Springs Chamber of Commerce. Thanks for, for your time. I won't take much of it. Um, census 2020 is important to count. As you know, uh, the census data that we gather from this is, is just crucial, it's just very important. Probably now, after what we just heard, more crucial than ever. I don't know. I've, I've been around for a long time, and, uh, it just seems like this is just the time to make sure that we're getting everything that we need to get. Census data, as you know, is used for redistricting, it's, uh, used for public planning, public services, um, roads, schools, healthcare, new businesses, economic development. All things are really important to our county. But most importantly, in my opinion, it's, it's what guides the allocation of funding. And, um, and so therefore, for that reason, the chamber really wants to be involved and make sure that we're, we're getting an accurate account, we're getting everything that we deserve to get, um, as far as, as funding and allocations for funding. So, we are asking for $800 from the county to help market, educate the public on the importance of the census. And this is strictly for educating, strictly for marketing, it's just strictly for making sure that, that our populace knows how important it is. Kayla Manico, who is from the YWCA and is a Rock Springs, um, Board of Directors member, is, is heading the committee. She did a bang-up job, she did a great job. Her and her committee have identified some avenues to market and encourage a return on your investment for the county. Some of those identifiers are West Wyoming College students. That's, that's an area that, that goes undercounted, they don't understand how important they are, and it could be a big, big count for us. So, educating those, those folks, letting them know. Also, uh, language barrier groups. We have several populous groups in, in our county that, that just don't get counted because they're not familiar with the language, and they don't understand how important it is. So, educating them. The underemployed, et cetera. There, there's several identified groups that we need to make sure that they're, they're aware of how important they are, how important it is for us to count them. What we hope to accomplish with this funding, and, and I understand things are, are strict right now, they're tight, but we see it as, as an investment. The return for the counting on this investment is to help us accomplish that, an accurate count. What we want to do is inform the public how important it is to, to be counted in the census. We're asking for the money, we, we're going to continue doing what we need to do, we just, we just would appreciate some help from the county to make sure that we're getting it done right. And the marketing is, is seems to be the direction to go, so we, we appreciate your consideration, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, and we'll just get back.
Commissioners, questions?
Mr. Johnson? Rick, you probably know that we are involved in that. Genie Fisher has been involved in that in the past. We just got some documentation on this. Eric Skid got that down there, and will do that again. The only question I have about the $800 is that surely will be spent in the entire county? You're not going to be, that's not going to be the Rox, just in the Rox Springs?
Just, it's not just Rox Springs, it's for the entire, this, this portion would be for the, we asked Rox Springs for money as well, and that money will be allocated for Rox Springs, but for the county, it's $800.
What did they say?
They, they, they were very generous.
Did you hear it?
Uh, well, we did. I'm, I'm sure that they're...
Did you all believe in equal?
Of course.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Johnson? Other commissioners' questions? Mr. Shanefield?
Um, we've had some discussion around Six Penny, um, that Walm settler is one that's been undercounted. Do you have a plan in addressing how Walm settler's population would be?
I think Kayla is working on that, and, and yes, because it was, to ask, go back to Commissioner Johnson's question, is, yeah, we, we want to, we want this funding to be for the county. We see opportunities, everything that's good for, for our chamber is good for the entire county, and so we want to make sure that that investment is for, for Walm settler, parallel, make sure every, every folks, all the folks up there are accounted, everybody throughout the county.
Thank you.
Good. Appreciate it. Commissioners, other questions? What's your pleasure?
Does it require any action?
Well, I'm, I don't know, that's my question.
I, I make a motion to authorize, uh, funding for Rox Springs Chamber in the interest of the census, and the amount of $800.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Discussion?
Where would that come out of the budget line item? Would it just be our commission line item, or?
No, I wouldn't want to take it. I think the events come with...
Yeah. We did probably, I, and then, if I may, in regard to your question, I probably referred our, our accountants here, so...
That, that was my question, actually.
Oh, where, where would we take it?
Where would you like to take it out of, um, if you would like to take it out of reserves, we would need to do a budget amendment. Um, if you don't want to take it out of reserves, it could come out of the commissioners'.
I think we need to look and see if it could come out of the commissioners'.
What I would suggest is take it out of the commissioners', and if there needs to be a budget amendment down the road, we'll take care of it.
All right. So, we've got a motion, we have a second, all those favor.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, okay, so we'll, we'll make sure you get your money.
Thank you.
No, thank you, appreciate what you do. Appreciate it. Thank you.
We're not, we're not on board yet.
Eight thousand coming out of your budget.
Okay, up next, I believe, is the Castle Rock and Ms. Bailey Doctor, the CEO.
Hello, sir.
And you'll introduce, you're just with you, as, and regarding the ambulance subsidy, right? Very good. And thanks for coming back like we asked you to.
You're welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Rest in peace. Yes, I hear you.
Hi.
Hey, how are you doing? Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
How's it going?
How are you?
I appreciate it. We'll see how it goes in the end. You see, I'm not worried. Okay, Bailey, would you please introduce your...
Yes, well, I'm Bailey Doctor, and the CEO for Castle Rock Hospital District here in the neighborhood. Dan Stanton, um, our board member, Cassie Storance, who is the board secretary. Reed Robbins is our treasurer. Bob Gordon is our chairman, and his watch will soon come.
Welcome. Okay, floor is yours.
Thank you. So, we're back requesting the remainder of the ambulance subsidy that we requested last spring. Uh, the way that we have figured our subsidy in the past is on a per-call basis, so we align our per-call subsidy with Sweetwater Medics. And this year, that rate, because of Sweetwater Medics increase, is $232 per call. Uh, we respond to about 1,300 calls a year, so that total amount increased to $301,000. Uh, in, uh, the spring, you approved six months' work with the caveat that we continue to explore the possibility of combining ambulance services with Sweetwater Medics. And, as you know, the hospital was able to determine that they couldn't take on ambulance at this time. So, we're back now requesting the remainder of the subsidy, which is another $150,500, which is half of what you, um, half of what we asked for this spring. So, that'll be from January through June, we're getting it.
Questions, commissioners?
Mr. Smith?
As we work through the process of, of changing the ambulance service and how things are going, um, say something happens in a month, two months, four months, um, could we recoup that money that, uh, that is not spent if, if you were to do something, combine, or whatever the case may be?
Yeah, I mean, I think depending on how we structure the, the change, in my experience, these things, you know, if, if something were to change, they don't happen too quickly. So, um, yeah, I mean, I think we could certainly talk about doing, are you saying like doing a month to month, or is that why you're doing this for other medics now?
Uh, yeah.
Which we do that, too. We submit a voucher every month.
Every month, yeah.
So, if it's not submitted voucher.
So, we're approving six months, and then you voucher for it month to month.
Okay. Okay with that? Okay. Any other questions? Lloyd?
Yeah, um, can I ask our, Ms. Berry a question?
Sure.
Bonnie, and just from our discussions, currently, we have nothing allocated for, you know, in the budget, actually, for Sweetwater Medics or Castle Rock for the next six months currently, correct?
That's correct. From January 1st till, uh, June 30th, there, there was no budget allocated during the, um, during the budget hearing and the adoption of the budget, there was only allocated monies from July 1st of 19 to December 31st of 19. So, half of the year was, uh, given to each of the two entities.
And if we were to pass this, this would probably have to go into a budget amendment.
That's correct.
And be presented at the next meeting and finalized, correct?
I could present that at the next meeting if that is what the commission says.
Just, okay, those are the questions I have to...
So, just so I, just so I understand where you're coming from and help me a little bit, is, one, we have, first of all, Castle Rock to deal with, but also what I'm hearing, and it's been verified that as much as we approve to continue the subsidies for Sweetwater Medics, we haven't authorized a, Bonnie, Ms. Berry, to do a budget amendment so we could start paying them as invoices. So, the second part of it is, is after we finish with Cas, Castle Rock, then we need to probably have that conversation, um, if we wish to authorize that, uh, budget amendment for Sweetwater Medics. Is that correct?
That would be the direction I think we have to go in, otherwise, we don't have, we don't have any agency, and that's not good for our citizens.
No, no, I agree with you. So, okay, very, anything else, Commissioner Lloyd? Any other questions from the commission?
I just, kind of a follow-up question for Jeff DeBailey was, um, you know, we talked if something, um, was to happen, and I know things don't happen overnight or at a quick point in a situation like this, have there been any further conversations regarding consolidation or anything just amongst the other entities since the hospitals moved away?
We have, uh, we haven't had any other formal workshops, but I have spoken to Sweetwater Medics about continuing to try to explore ways that we can work closely together or even combine services. We, we still stand by for medics, and they do the same for us. So, we really do, I mean, we operate very closely together, um, so none of that has stopped.
So, we're still distant.
Yeah, we're still, we're still trying to figure out a way, and we would welcome your feedback if there's a way that you feel like would be appropriate, civil services to combine. That's certainly something that we're open to.
So, it's not something, it's, it's, you know, we don't have a crystal ball or anything, but it, it'd be hard to believe it would be ready to go in six months at this point. You would probably write out this contract at this point.
I would assume so, yeah.
Good, thank you. Anything more, Commissioner Lloyd? Anything more?
No more questions.
At the moment.
I wish I could write to Marit.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
I think we, if we, whatever we do, we should do it with an understanding that it's a month-to-month agreement and event, because we have a problem, because we're, the county's got a problem, we don't know where we're going to end up with this thing. So I think that we should fund it, it has to be done with a budget amendment, that with a clear understanding, it's month-to-month, it could change, and we would want to retain the option of making those changes relative to the agreements that we might make relative to the next meeting with budget amendment. And I want to throw that out so that all of you can hear, at least I'm saying, I know what we're going to be with our agreement with, when we have to vote on this thing. That's my view on it, because it's a fluid, fluid situation right now, and we don't have the issue resolved.
Any other comments from the commissioners? I'll just make this, I fully agree with, you know, month-to-month, I certainly support subsidy for Castle Rock as well as when we get Sweetwater Medics, and I think it needs to continue on a month-to-month basis to the tune of $150,500, whatever that is, month-to-month. Will that work for your operation, Bailey? It would work with it, so I would go right alongside with what Commissioner Johnson's saying, because everything is fluid, and I think this commission will keep you informed as best we can as we move forward, when we know what's going on there. So that would be my comment to it. So that's all I have to say. Commissioners? Pleasure? Irritated motion?
I don't think we need a motion. We need a budget amendment next week.
No, budget amendment, we'll take care of it. So go ahead and authorize Bonnie to move forward with budget amendment. Um, you, let's, okay, I'll throw it in for both entities, as well as Sweetwater Medics, as well as, you want us to back off one at a time?
I would like to, I would like to speak with Sweetwater Medics. I wasn't a part of the conversations at the beginning because I wasn't here, and so I have some questions.
Let's do Castle Rock and then we'll talk to Bonnie a little bit about Sweetwater Medics.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so with that, we'll authorize Bonnie to do a budget amendment for Castle Rock, at that tune, you know, $150,500, and we'll look at it at our next meeting, prove it. Does that work for yous?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Have a good day. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We know that a previous meeting a while back, we did continue to.
I agree, we discussed that executive session.
Oh, very good. We'll move that to executive session because it deals with contract.
Right.
Okay, very good. We'll move that. All right? Okay, with that, up now will be our events complex, a budget amendment for insurance and mill rate decrease. First.
The repayment for equipment.
Do you want a break?
I need one.
Could we take a two-hour break?
Minimum.
Can I do it because I can't get the computer to work.
Larry could help you if it take longer.
Gotta love it, you gotta love it, Larry.
Let's take a little break.
Okay, let's take a break. We'll be back here 10 minutes, 10 to 12. Thank you. Thank you. Bye. Excellent. Any other questions?
This, you know, this is extremely impressive, Barry, too, and we get to see this, but does the public get to see this type of presentation? And if not, where, how can you get it in front of the public? Because eventually, the public's going to decide what goes with this thing.
Well, we're going to be taking, hitting the road here pretty soon. We just want to make sure that you folks who saw the back of the building, you all, all of the losses about how that was going to be put up, so, before we, before you end up in another meeting someplace and see something you haven't seen before.
You definitely want to, I would presume you're thinking airing it when you know whether or not it's going to be on the ballot, it's part of it.
You wouldn't be any good if it was a part of it.
Right, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, that was great. Thanks for sharing. I was wondering about going to the podcast. Okay, next item.
There are, first of all, did that have a, I'd like to see what you had, but. As you know, that we've been working with the National School of Rodeo, who, we've been notified that they're going to be selecting future facilities on the basis of indoor rodeo facilities. And so currently do not have that except that the, which is kind of right side. I just want to kind of remind everybody, if, you know, where the economic impact associated with the National School of Rodeo.
It was $65,574,000.
That's a lot of money.
Since it started.
And we've got, if we back and turn forward and follow, but they're giving us a, that future bidding, what they're going to want to do is to move indoors. And many times they've been rang out, I don't believe, but the return on investment.
Excellent. Any other questions? Commissioner Johnson.
This, you know, this is extremely impressive area to, and we get to see this, but does the public get to see this type of presentation? And if not, where, how can you get it in front of the public? Because eventually, the public's going to decide what goes with this thing.
Well, we're going to be taking, hitting the road here pretty soon. We just wanted to make sure that you folks were, uh, saw the back of the building. And you all, all of the nuances about how that was going to be, you know, put up. So, before we, before you end up in another meeting someplace, you see something you haven't seen before.
You definitely want to, I would presume you're thinking airing it when you know whether or not it's going to be on the ballot. It's part of it. You wouldn't be any good if it wasn't part of it.
Right, okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you. That was great. Thanks for sharing. I was wondering about going to the podcast. Okay, next item.
There are, first of all, did that have a, I'd like to see what you had, Joe, but... As you know, that we've been working with the National High School rodeo, who, we've been notified that they're going to be selecting future facilities on the basis of indoor rodeo facilities. And so, currently, do not have that except that the, uh, which is kind of right size. Um, I just want to kind of remind everybody if, you know, where the economic impact associated with the National High School rodeo.
I think sixty-five million, five-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand.
That's a lot of money.
Since it started.
And we've got a, if we back it, turn it forward, then, but they're giving us a, that, you know, future bidding, what they're going to want to do is to move indoors. And many times, they've been rang out. I don't believe it, but, uh, the return on investment has been exactly as we've indicated. Those are large numbers. Those are the economic impact into our community. Um, the cost of the, uh, new rodeo arena is seventeen...
Sixteen, that was on the six cent project list at first, and you all asked us to decrease that. So, that was at sixteen point one million for the second indoor arena building we were to proceed with.
Now, regardless if it goes on with six penny, or if it doesn't, um, we're going to be looking for a way to fund that. Uh, we think the return on investment superseds, um, the chances of putting it on ballot and not having it approved for whatever reason. So, we're going to be looking for other funding choices because we go along. But, you know, those are, that's a, that's a, it's a large ROI, um, you know, which we work on. And I think it's great for the, you know, for a lot of businesses that are going to be, maybe, impacted by some fluctuations in, uh, other revenue centers in, in Sweetwater County, such as the, uh, maybe Happy Inn out of Bridge. So, that's all we have. Uh, I don't know how to proceed with this, other than, uh, we've, we've got to find that amount of money, uh, as we go forward. And I don't believe, uh, we're going to be making an effort up on, on the state level. Don't know how that's, what, so, they're all facing the same issues.
Funding, is any indication from the state level, it's going to continue to be less before it's more?
Right. So, but, uh, when you bring that kind of people, that number of people into this community, and flush them through here, and have them spend the kind of money they need to spend, uh, you want to make sure that the board commissioners understand the importance of this particular project. And you want to make it just with our board, and I want to make it sure that you guys draw up the data now.
Appreciate that. Appreciate hearing that. Commissioners, go ahead. Commissioner Johnson?
First of all, Larry, I, I applaud you for what you're doing there. And I think you're absolutely right in not clouding the issue with what you're talking about in the future. As a matter of fact, I don't think it'd be wise to say too much about it at this point in time. But at what point do you need to be able to say to the, to the rodeo people that you have this? How far in the future is that, before you have to have that, that decision made? I'm talking about the, you, you got to get over, you got to get over the current battle with the six cent right now.
And, and agree, that's, that's...
And that should be number one priority for them.
So, when you talk about, this stuff is, we have them booked in, uh, for twenty-four, twenty-five, but they're already taking bids for twenty-six, twenty-seven, you know, further out. And so, uh, the sooner that we can come up with a possible funding mechanism for this, whether it be borrowing their money, or whether not, it be, um, some other mechanisms. The Wally Johnson Foundation, for example.
I, I, I think, you guys, the foundation has...
It's a good idea, also. I think it's a good idea.
His board of directors, I don't think is a board.
But, the first step is to let you go, is going on. Second step is to tell you that we've got them booked in for twenty-four, twenty-five. And the third item is that we are starting to look at, they're already starting to look at twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, I think. So, we will come back to the plan, but I, we're going to need some input from the commission, and we'll come back with some other options.
Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? All right. So, then, we get down. Now, are we ready to move into the heartwarming?
This, this is dear to my heart.
I figured it was.
Uh, I had a meeting, I think, right before the holidays with Commissioner Lloyd and Ms. Berry about our, um, budget. So, there's a couple of things that we wanted to visit with you about. I think there was a little bit of confusion when we did our budget in July, and I apologize that we were just able to get back together to December. But, um, we thought it was the intent of the commission to keep our budget funding level at the same level that it was in twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen. But when we actually received our final budget, we were actually cut by sixty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. And so, I went back with Commissioner Lloyd and Ms. Berry, and I think that was part of the discussion between the COLA monies and raises and those types of things. But what we're asking you is to reconsider, um, putting our budget back to its own level. So, adding the sixty-six, nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight back into our budget, which would put us back at last year's funding levels. The second part of that conversation was, Commissioner Lloyd came to us when the insurance increases came at twenty percent. Um, we tried to be proactive on that until we had talked to Gary McLean several times before the budget to say, hey, what's happening? Of course, they didn't have any information at that time. So, Commissioner Lloyd came to us and said, you know, once they find out what the percentage is, that we can come back to the commission and ask for that. So, the twenty, twenty percent increase in health insurance is forty-two thousand, three hundred dollars is the, the number to our budget. So, we figured if we were going to ask for one, we would ask for the other. So, total amount is a hundred and nine thousand, two sixty-eight for this year, which is significant for us. So, um, each of those numbers is significant. When you put them together, it's very significant. So, we're asking you to consider, um, helping to cover those health insurance increases, and then also putting our mill levy, what it was before, which we thought was your intent. I just think there was kind of some confusion when we went back and forth.
Thank you. Anything else with that? Candy? Okay, commissioners, questions?
I'd like to hear what Lloyd, Commissioner Lloyd, can just say about that.
Yeah, I think, this is something Bonnie and I talked about, too. Um, when we, and we actually had some side conversations that day, um, when we approved the budget, that we realized that, it's my understanding, historically, the commission has for the component agencies covered those insurance costs. And for whatever reason, with the late change, it did not roll into those component agencies. And it had a drastic effect on the events complex, Southwest Counseling, and even the library and the museums. At that point, I was really as on for four of those agencies. And one of the discussions we had was, if it did affect them, that they could come back and, and look for that budget amendment. Because historically, we were, from my understanding from talking to Bonnie, historically, um, the commission has funded those pieces of their budgets, because that's what we've always done. And so, that's what we've done historically, and it was really our oversight in, in the communication of that to the component agencies. I think on the insurance side of things, to me, I think we should really consider covering that of, and the other entities that may, may approach us, because that was our oversight.
Thank you.
And when I said they could cover the request, I mean, they could cover the request, whether it would be, there was no guarantee. And I did say I felt like we shouldn't live up to that, if that's what we've done historically. But that was one of, I make the quarter lot at the, at the meetings, I'm one of five.
No.
What about the other part of this, that forty thousand, what's the, what about the other sixteen?
The other piece of that, Pete, that was, the COLA piece is what it was, if I remember right. And Bonnie, he'll be correct if I'm wrong. You have the sixty-six, right? And what happened was, when we created, um, when, if I remember, and Doc and Jeff and, and Commissioner Johnson, feel free to jump in, as we were doing the budget, uh, we did say we had funded the events complex, what we, what we had done the year previous year. But then what happened is some of the entities had, um, larger amounts of raises than we were giving to our employees. So, we had them go back and reduce some of that rate there. And I don't think the intention was to, um, lower where the events complex was going. But when that formula came through, it did lower based, because they did have less than five to seven percent raises for some of their employees. So...
Okay, Keith, other questions? Go ahead.
So, the raise that you had in your budget, were those that were cut back on, were those given to the employees, or were, were they cut back to, what was your question?
No, the two percent COLA is what was approved.
Okay.
Yes. I had mentioned to Ms. Berry when we met, that the question on the budget asks what, I can't remember what the, what it is, but the percentage of raises. And the percentage that we had there included the steps and the COLA, instead of just the COLA. So, there was some confusion in there. So, that's where that money difference came in. So, um, last year, the mill levy allocation was two-point-eight-five-three. This year, we were down to two-point-seven-eight-six. So, um, again, we just thought it was the intent that we stay at the same level. And that's what all the conversation was about, say, just a conversation.
Other comments, commissioners? Some of you are still marinating on it, so I'll make a comment. Okay, all right. So, I, yeah, I looked, I pulled the budget from last year. I saw the five and six percent, and I went, okay, I remember that piece. Uh, going back to the health insurance twenty percent increase, um, now, I know the county took the twenty percent increase, uh, overall, but yet, with their employees, there still was a co-pay, employees paid twenty percent, you know, of that. So, is that figured in?
It is.
In your dollars?
It is. We used your exact, um, prices. We don't change those a lot. I know the hospital and Southwest Counseling maybe changes some of theirs, but we use the exact same formula that you guys used for your insurance.
Same thing, so that's, that's, that's apples to apples.
Yeah, apples to apples. So, forty-two thousand, three hundred is the difference on the calculated rates between twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty.
All right. So, the co-pay and all stuff worked out?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Now, let's go back to the budget. Two thousand and eighteen, Sweetwater County funded you. That's the money we gave you, one million, nine-hundred, ten thousand and seventy-six dollars. Towards the end of that budget, I remember commissioners asking the question, well, no, I'll take back up. Towards the, sometime during that budget, in that, the events complex presented a three-year plan for improvements. So, starting out first year, nearly nine hundred thousand, and then a million, and then a little more than a million, third year. So, for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, we included that nine hundred thousand, which brought you approximately two-point-eight, two million, eight-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars, approximately. There's still changing. And then, we come into our budget for this year, in that, we left that nine hundred thousand in. So, really, for the most part, we did fund you four to one point nine, and put the nine hundred K in again for this year, is what we did. So, how did we short you the six, the sixty-six or the forty-six that we're talking about? Where do you account this thing?
There was a couple other things in there. So, um, the salaries obviously increased. You guys had, had approved the, the COLA increase. The salaries increased a little bit. So, that was thirty, thirty-seven thousand dollars. Um, our operating expenses went up, and that was in that budget year. So, that went up about five percent, our annual operating expenses. Um, and then the money that was left over for capital.
Okay.
So, it just, that combination of those two things made the difference of the sixty-six and sixty-eight.
Okay. Well, and the point I want to make is, there's still nine hundred thousand dollars that the commission allocated over and above what your budget was in two eighteen, left the same budget the next year. Here's another nine hundred, left the same here this year, and left the nine hundred in. So, just a point of reference is, when we decide what the message is for the budget this year, um, I would hope that that nine hundred thousand dollars you realize is negotiable, in my words. I'm not speaking for the rest, but I remember when all that took place for that extra money. I mean, not that you couldn't use it or anything, but, you know, we don't know what the revenues are going to be. So, and then, what's, do you know offhand, um, your cash on hand, how many days?
Currently, I do not, I don't know yet.
Do you know, Mary?
I think this, it's going to be about the same as we were last year. I think that was sixteen...
Forty-seven, forty-seven. I got last year's. So, you think you're writing that same name of it? Okay. And then, you do get your loan you take at the beginning of the year, so you pay bills and that, until we start getting tax dollars in to get your money. So, that's all, all worth it.
Right.
Thank you. I don't know if that made any sense to anybody.
That's good. That's good.
So, okay.
I think it's safe to say that we run as close to a business profile as we possibly can.
Yeah.
With, with that being said, tongue in cheek, when are you going to be self-sufficient? That's part of a business profile, Larry.
Well, um, as soon as we figure out a way to keep the people with the torches on their project.
Which is, you know, at some point in time, we got to talk about what, what, how many years out is that going to be, and then you get there.
Well, I think, I think that's exactly what we're trying to do.
Yeah, we are.
Is we continue to make those type of improvements, and, uh, to Candice and, and Lynn and the rest of them, to improve, recruit a lot of things that we're recruiting. You know, we've got, uh, the Motor Coach Association people coming in. Those are huge dollars from an economic standpoint. Now, we can draw them in, but there is a limit to what we can charge them for being in.
I know. And I get all that, you know, but at some point in time, those things got to pay for, rather than you guys drawing out of your regular budget, is what I mean. I mean, the whole shebang. Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Any more questions? Okay, commissioners?
I'd like to hear what Roy sees their raise on, what's your recommendation?
My recommendation, for sure, is to cover the insurance difference. Because Bonnie, I want to clarify with a question for you, is historically, the commission has covered that for the component agencies, correct?
Historically, um, the, the component units have known in advance how much that would be prior to them turning in their request for funding. Um, so, they had, you know, that, that was just part of the expenses that they were aware of when they turned in their request. Um, I'm not sure if, generally, before the requests are due, um, those, those component units would either contact HR, HR would let them know what approximately the increase would be. Um, I know the twenty percent was never talked about until after those were due. So, there was no way for them to anticipate a twenty percent increase, because we've never had such a large increase. It's historically been more, more like five percent. Uh, so, so, in the sense that they knew what that was before, and they could include that in their request, yes, the commission has covered that. We've just never had a situation like this, where it's been such a significant increase that came out after the fact.
To filter into the budget.
So, based with that, I, I think the budget would have been adjusted accordingly with the right information. So, I firmly, I firmly support making sure that's covered. As far as the other, um, I would also support that. Um, and the reason being is, um, is I, one of the things that came out with that, and I know this is a different entity, but Southwest Counseling, when we made the reduction of theirs, based on the two percent of the raises, um, we actually are like less than like five percent, five or six percent of the total Southwest Counseling, uh, budget. And when they were giving a little bit more in raises, it was actually miniscule. So, I think that, that number was flawed, or could have, flawed a thing. Bonnie did the best she could in this situation. And Bonnie is, we're blessed to have her. Um, but I, I do think that would be, I would recommend looking at both numbers at this point, and supporting both numbers.
So, what is that? Give me that total dollars again.
A hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight. And that breaks down forty-two thousand, three hundred for insurance, sixty-six, nine, sixty-eight, just the DCs in the county budget.
And, and I want to restate what I just said, is that, I don't like the term flawed. I think the hard part is, when we, when we took away that COLA, it's, it's difficult, because each of the component agencies are different. And, and I don't know if there's a solid number to make it fair across the board, except, hey, what were you going to give your employees to raise this? We want you to show you what the number is at two percent, is what we would do.
Commissioner Johnson?
Well, there's a little difference when you talk about the events complex. They bring in a tremendous amount of money into the county that they, that, you know, we cannot account for. When you talk about the eight million dollars, that's, that's, benefits of that are the, for vendors that exist in this water county and others. That doesn't, that doesn't necessarily flow through the events complex. We have to take that on as, I mean, in a bit, so, what I, what I think should be done, and Roy is on top of that, he's done the research. I think what Roy needs to do is make motion to, uh, bring that amount to, for a budget amendment, bring that amount for the, which gives us time to, to digest that, we could, better. That's all I have.
Okay. So, any other questions, comments? Um, just one more thing. Mr. Johnson's right, the amount of money that you brought in, representing the multiple, multitude of different interests throughout this county, you guys have done a great job. And every one of them does bring in some economic... And every one of them does bring in some economic giveback, just some more than others. And what's key about it is what we've got to figure out is what is it the people want? And what are they willing to pay for, and figure out how to pay for it? And so it sounds like that's the model you're working under, so with that, that's all I have to say. So I'll go back here, there, Mr. Commissioner Lloyd, as liaison, would you like to?
A big motion to approve a budget. Well, I guess we would need to have Bonnie make a budget amendment, these won't be reduced, so that wouldn't even require a motion at this point, would it?
It wouldn't require a motion.
Okay.
If the commission would just like to direct me to make it, it doesn't require a motion, because the motion will be a budget amendment at the next.
So what you would like is, commissioners, should we move on, authorize it, Bonnie, to make a budget amendment for the Sweetwater events complex to a hundred and nine thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars? Is that correct?
Thirty-five cents.
Thirty-five cents, okay, we've got to get that in.
For consideration.
For consideration at the next meeting. Very good. Everybody agrees? Okay, we'll move forward. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll be at the thirty.
One comment, though. As I listen, and it's just my opinion, it sounds more like it's a process of getting component units, agencies, as well as whatever proper or in a timely manner notification. So we need to work harder to get that done through all our departments, and that's on us, in my opinion, and purely my opinion, and I'll leave it right there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have a good one.
So, thank you, guys.
We're not leaving yet.
Oh, that's right.
We forgot to leave our bugs in the audience for a few minutes.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is a six penny allocation. And I believe with that, it'll be a discussion led by Commissioner Shanefield. And do we need anything up on the screen for anybody?
I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Lloyd first, because he's had some conversations with Rob that I was not a part of, and he's got some, some other ideas as well, so. And then I would like to, I'd like to start with us looking at the total amount that we are going to allocate in total, or allowed to be allocated in total, and move on that. And then I believe we should at that point look at what percentages and how we're going to be sending that back to the different entities to come back with projects.
Very good. And I would encourage commissioners of all possible, it'd be nice that before we leave this agenda topic, that we have that in place, because there's other timely things coming up. I know we say we got time, but time flies rather quickly. So with that in mind, we'll turn it over to Commissioner Lloyd.
Okay. Well, this has been a, this, this six penny process is difficult, because currently we're at a hundred and eighty million dollars of project requests. And honestly, you can make argument that any one of those project requests are really tough. And after our last workshop with this, I went back and I've spent countless hours figuring out what projects to cut and those kind of things, and, and how to move forward. And I, and I really became quickly, I quickly realized that I don't know if I should be the one making the cuts. So I am, I have two concepts I want to throw out today. One, one was the base concept I came out, and then I'd like to ask Chairman Wenning to let Rob kind of present some ideas, because I think Rob last week laid in the week. I mean, just, because I, I got to be honest, as much as I like, we like to give him, we give him some stuff, he, he's got so much historical knowledge of the county that it's a benefit. And so I go from bashing him this morning to praising him, so it's kind of my polar on my part, but I apologize. But yeah, but what I came up with was a formula, a concept of how do we come up with an idea instead of us picking and choosing what projects that we would cut, of giving each of the entities, the municipalities, a certain amount of money based upon population and, or some kicker, because I think one of the things we had to look at with Superior, Granger, Bear Oil, one of their issues is they don't have the ability to generate much sales tax. And so it's more difficult for them to create some of those projects. But I'm also going to say, I have a difficult time considering giving Granger a eleven, a nine to eleven million dollars for a couple of reasons. A, proportion of sizes, dollars per person. Also, the question, do they have the infrastructure, the ability to finish nine million dollars of projects has to be a question. So the first formula that I came up with was basically, I took the population of the, of the community, which was Bear Oil was a point two-three, I moved them to one percent, I moved that, I rounded them up to the whole number, which was one, and I added two percent. So for Superior, Granger, and Bear Oil, it worked out to be about two point four million dollars a community. Wam Sutter ended up being three point two million dollars a community, leaving eighty-seven million dollars left, eighty-seven percent of the money left. And I broke it down at twenty-five percent for the county, twenty-five percent for the city of Green River, at thirty-five percent for the city of Rock Springs. And the thought was then, we would give that whole number to those communities and entities, and ask them to say, okay, now you have the projects you were looking at, you come tell us what projects, and then we'll group them. And I think, you know, and, and so no matter what number we decide to go with as a commission, I think that kind of thought process, and I don't know if those are the exact numbers we want to go with, is necessarily what we would want to go. But what I think it does, it gives the municipalities a better concept of where we're at. It also takes us off from having to make the decisions for the municipalities of what are their most important projects. And, and so that's kind of how I broke it down. And then, you know, like for us as a county, we have multiple projects that we come to us, and within our percentage, we decide which ones we would put up on the board for vote. And then, once we got those projects, we would bring them back and group them. And I think our responsibility as a commission is, is there are some super valuable projects that will end up on the ballot, there are some super valuable projects that aren't going to end up on the ballot. Our job is to be able to package them and put them in a way to allow the entities to go out and market it. But I think right now, we're facing a lot of negativity in the community regarding this, and no matter what projects go through, to be able to give our entities the opportunity to market it and put a pause to spin on what they've done to make this happen and go through. So I believe it's our job to put it out there in the ballot the best way we can, to consider all the different entities, their muddies, their needs, in a way, in a package that it will pass, or the majority would pass. And the greatest thing about this, this tax is, we get it put on the ballot, but the voter's going to decide. And that's the greatest piece of this, of this process. But how do we put it out there to have the greatest amount of possibility for success for the voters to pass it? So that's kind of how I broke it down. Rob had another great formula, and he walked out on me. It was very similar. And his actually looked at it a little bit differently, and so when he comes back, if we have questions, we can ask him, and I'll do my best, was took some of the same concept I had, but looked at the actual, the actual requests from each of the entities, and gave it, and used it to assign the value of like point seven-five for any kind of infrastructure value, or projects, point two-five percent for quality of life projects, and then, and then came up with an equivalent number there. The smaller communities do receive a much higher of both of our proceeds, but both of the ways we came up with, per capita, per person, but I think, you know, we almost are going to have to have that to give the smaller community something. And I do believe they, they're a viable part of this community, and I think we need to make sure we're also supporting them. So that's kind of where some of the thoughts I had, so.
So I, one second, I'll have you come up there just a minute. I've asked Doc to put up a spreadsheet that all of the commissioners have as well. But I took Roy's consideration and put that, that's total option one for eighty million, because that's been, the base discussion is where the cap has been kind of set. And allocated that out with the three percent, three percent. I actually lowered Superior to two percent, because the three percent was over their requested amount.
Yes, absolutely.
And then, looking at county, Rock Springs, and Green River, I think that that's going to be a little bit bigger discussion between us as well, once we figure out the total amount. The total option number two, all of these are for eighty million, so if we did vote on something different than that, then we would re, you know, relook at the numbers. But after the total option two, the allocation, I looked at the projects that potentially in turn with the percentages, and with Bear Oil, that would allow them to complete their top project. Granger, it would allow them to complete their top project. Rock Springs, it would allow them to complete all their non-sponsored requests, if that's what they chose to do. With Superior, it would allow them to complete their only request. Green River, it would be, oh wait, Wam Sutter, it would be their top two projects, and Green River, it would be their top three projects. I also wanted to keep in mind that Granger and Green River potentially have some slip money coming, they will have slip money coming, that would also be able to play into that. And Wam Sutter, we've been having some discussion around the population there, in that it really isn't accounting for the actual population that is utilizing Wam Sutter, because there's so many rental units that weren't accounted for with the census and everything else. So that is why Wam Sutter's number is at six percent on these, or on this spreadsheet, so. The last total option, which is not my recommendation, but I thought it was important to look at, was solely by population, bumping those lower entities up, because that is the whole purpose of the six penny tax initiative, is to give them a fair share due to not having as much population and still needing the infrastructure that's vital for these communities. So as you see, if we went solely off of percentage of population, Rock Springs and Superior would be receiving over the requested amount, and that would, that also leaves Sweetwater County in kind of a limbo, so. Are there any questions around that?
I have, it's not a question, it's a comment. When you start looking at the percentage that they represent, and that was the request of Rock Springs, for example, and they, they're saying we should get this percentage of the total by, the thing we have to remember is, we represent all forty-four thousand of those people. So I think we have a bigger responsibility in this thing, just, Rock Springs, Green River, Superior, and that. We have to be fair, I understand that, but I think we have to remember that we represent everyone in the county. And some of these projects, in my opinion, better serve everybody in the county, as opposed to those that are just in the city. The one I historically have always used is the hospital. The hospital, it's so easy to see that the hospital represents and is critical to everyone in the county, as opposed to some of the things that are strictly in Rock Springs or Green River or Granger.
Absolutely. I agree a hundred percent.
Comment I'd like to make is, I was working through this, I'm trying to wrap the head around it. You know, the population, I just had a hard time going in that direction, so I started looking at the tax base and talked with the Treasury's office about that. As I mentioned in the interview, the eastern third of our county, the Wam Sutter Bear Oil area, it's twenty-two, over twenty-two percent of the tax revenue, you know, so, so it's hard to say, well, thanks for paying for twenty-two percent in, we're going to give you eight percent of this other money back. And so, not that I had a great answer for that, but I've tried to work through some things, and tried to make the numbers work, and it's, I'm just saying that that's, we should consider that as well. It's, it's not strictly about the population, and it's, it should be based on other things as well. And it kind of was brought up by Mary, you know, we pay for schools, we don't only use the schools, we pay for fire, hopefully we're not using fire. And, you know, should, should Wam Sutter get, you know, a fair shit? Should they have clean water, or whatever cases? So, food for thought.
Next question?
Rob, would you like to? Now that Commissioner Lloyd's throwing you the question.
Yeah. Back up, I made a couple of things too. Well, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I was not really prepared to do this, so I had to grab some information. Just for a little background on this, the middle of the week last week, Commissioner Lloyd called me, and I wanted to bounce his ideas on me. You know, I think his point was, you know, you've worked with these in the past, you've had pretty strong feelings in the past, and you know what those are. What do you think of this idea? And so, after listening to him, you know, basically what I had said was, you know, I'd be glad to kind of go through what you've done, and I think, I don't have any problems with what his concepts are, I think it's a very viable way to look at this. But I thought that there were a couple of things that probably needed to be tweaked in my mind, if you were willing to go forward with this type of scenario. And so what I did, and I didn't have an awful lot of, and I have thought a lot about this, so I think there's good thought that was gone into some of this. So I put together, you know, basically under his proposal, I took a number of people in each of the communities, I took the total dollars that have been requested, and tried to apply what he had done, and then just amend that, kind of do what I think he was. My thinking all along has been, I told everyone, I think eighty-five million dollars is the number, and I've been saying that for, since day one. It's very similar to what we did previously. What he had asked me to look at was eighty million dollars. So I did that, and I also put the eighty-five million dollars in that I'd been thinking. And looked at the first model, and when I did that, what I came up with, we had talked, once again, we felt like the small communities, obviously, it's much more difficult for them, as we all know, in a rural population, to fund their infrastructure with a small population than it is for larger communities. So I used the Elizabeth Warren plan, and I took money from the Doc, and I gave it to the bottom in some situation.
We're going to impeach you, Commissioner.
Yeah, briefly, I just said that's what I did. So, so basically what I did was I took five times the amount of money for the smaller populations that I did for the larger populations. And so rather than giving Rock Springs the forty-two, or excuse me, the fifty-three percent that they represented in the population, they would have actually received forty-three percent roughly. Green River, which actually represents twenty-eight and a half percent of the total population, would have gotten twenty-five percent, and on down the line with those modifications. And looking at the numbers that I came up with in doing that, with an eighty-five million dollar appropriation, it was obvious that most of the entities weren't going to receive anywhere near the number that they were looking for when doing this. So I thought, well, you know, having thought about this previously, how, what other ways could we look at this and potentially do it? So I put together a couple of other scenarios that I thought might make sense, and a lot of it would depend on how you choose to, to put these things on the ballot. And what's been done in the past is, a lot of times, you've taken initiatives like the hospital, put it out separately, you've taken out the events complex, you put it out separately. The police station in Green River was put on the ballot separately. And so I looked at that and put, basically, I came up with four criteria. One would be, or four initiatives, one the hospital, one the events complex, one which would be the infrastructure needs that have been asked for, and the other would be quality of life issues. And in doing that, I basically weighted the infrastructure at three times what I did for quality of life issue that I think was more important, just arbitrarily in my mind, just to come up with a number to share with Lloyd in doing this. And so in doing that, when I look at the eighty million dollars, you know, it's, if you look, if all, if you put four initiatives on the ballot, the hospital for eleven million dollars, I realize I didn't have the numbers either, so I don't, these are probably not accurate, but they're relatively close. The hospital, let's say, was eleven million dollars, the events complex, I had eleven point two from my recollection that they were asking for. Forty-seven point one million dollars in infrastructure, and fifteen point seven million dollars for quality of life. That, that would break down, you'd have sixty-two point eight million dollars for your infrastructure and quality of life. You'd have eleven million for the hospital, eleven point two for the events complex. If you look at that, it gets, Rock Springs fairly close to the number that they were looking at, but it doesn't do a lot for voters. But I think what it, what it made me look at was that I think we potentially need to look at more money, and it all comes down in my mind, I'm going back on myself, and I hate to do that, I've always said eighty-five million dollars is the number, but in looking at this, eighty-five doesn't work in this scenario. So for the scenario to work more, work better for everyone, I plugged in a hundred million dollars. And the reason I chose a hundred million dollars was in thinking, you know, the way society has changed over the last several years, people who are buying cars nowadays, it's very common when they buy a car, they're buying it with a seventy-two month loan. So in looking at seventy-two months, it would be the same as going out and buying a car at this point in time, and financing it for seventy-two months. If we were to go seventy-two months on this project, it would raise about a hundred million dollars. And so that was the numbers that I had shared with Lloyd. And so that was the numbers that I had shared with Lloyd, with Commissioner Lloyd this morning, was if we had raised it to that, and, and with the concept that we would have basically three different things on the ballot. And his thinking was, and I, I tend to agree with this, I mean, the communities know where the money needs to be spent, much more so than I do, so I, I would think it would be better for them to choose their specific projects, whether they're infrastructure or whether they're quality of life, but give them the total for that, and then let them make that decision within the scope of this, if we were to allocate the money on these funds. But the, the basic premise then came out once again, I, I think, I could be swayed, which I didn't think that I could, and I think with communication and going out to the public, and I, I think we could sell potentially a little bit higher um issue than what, than what I had considered previously. And so that was what we had talked about this morning, and I, I still waffle on that, and I, I don't, I hate to waffle.
Well, don't.
Well, the, the whole, the whole reason, once again, and, and my, my belief in, in this entire process, is we've been very successful with this in the past. And the last two issues that we've done have been around the eighty million dollar mark, about eighty-two million dollars on the last one that we did. Inflation, I think we could go, that's why I've always said eighty-five million dollars. But the, the more important thing, is I think everyone has to realize what we're trying to do is sell this to the public, they have to buy into this, and everyone's who have to vote in favor of it. And we've proven that they, they will do that with what we've done in the past, with, with going out with an eighty million dollar issue, providing the information that we've done in the past and everything else. And my belief is that, you know, there's a very, very high likelihood, if we were to do that, it would be successful, which is what we all want. Do I believe that it could be successful if we do everything right, and we went a little bit more than that at this point in time? I would say, I think yes. I don't think it's as likely, and, and it certainly has to be weighed by you to do that. But that was my input, and as I say, I was doing this just for, to try and, Commissioner Lloyd, in this, I, I wasn't trying to bring you a proposal or anything, it was just some things that I had put together that I thought would try and help him. So I hope it gives you a little bit of information, and, um, that, that was basically what our thoughts were.
Thank you very much, Rob.
Hey, thank you, Rob.
Questions?
If you want to correct him, they, they all have not passed. There are all things on a ballot, ballot that went down.
No, absolutely, and I, I didn't.
There will be some, in my opinion, this year, that will go down also.
Oh, I agree, and it certainly depends on how they're packaged.
That's.
And I, I didn't mean to allude to the fact that they'd all passed, I, because I certainly know that's not the case.
And the first thing I think the taxpayer's gonna look at is that total amount.
I, I agree wholeheartedly.
But I also think that's a taxpayer's choice, in that if we, if we, if we separate it out with, you know, they can choose to vote for eighty million, and then that other twenty million doesn't get funded, then, you know, I think that much more.
And that was my thought in doing this, because if you, if you put basically eighty million, a little under eighty million dollars for the infrastructure out, the public can choose that if that's what their desire is, they don't have to choose the other, so they can limit to that amount if they choose to do that at that point, you know. And I, I tend to agree totally with Commissioner Johnson, I, I think certainly some projects are going to, are destined to fail with this, if you put them out in there all in that nature. But I also believe, and I, I heard him say at another commission meeting, if you put it all together, it's destined to fail, and I really believe that's the case also.
I agree, for sure.
We all agree, I think we all agree with that.
Commissioner Smith?
I think that the, it's my feeling, the dollar not is important, I'm, I think that the time to pay it back is, for me, anyway, that's, that's the more important thing there. You know, if a hundred million meant ten years, then I'm thinking no way, but if a hundred million can be in that seven-year range, perhaps a little less, maybe a little bit.
Seventy-one months.
Seventy-one months, so, you know, that's, that's, that's kind of where I've always felt, is the five to seven year, ninety to a hundred million is really what I've, what I've felt was kind of the, the selling point for me, anyway, that's where I thought.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I think using your scenario about buying a car, I've been lobbied by some of the people that are selling those cars, and you got one percent, you got a fifty thousand dollar car, you got, you know, you got five thousand dollars, or whatever that number ends up being, whether it's a seventy-five thousand dollar car or whatever, their opinion is it's going to hurt them in this project. So there, I think there's a lot of different things we need to look at before we do this.
Totally agree.
And let me go back to, on, what did you say, how many months, seventy-one?
Yeah, the approximate for a hundred million, for at least seventy-one months.
Six years and a month, not quite said.
That was Rob's approximate numbers.
Yeah, I, I misspoke about the amount a little bit.
Okay, that's okay, I just wanted to make sure I heard that. Commissioner Smith?
Rob, is that based off of what we're currently bringing in now?
Well, it's not what we're bringing in now, because we don't have it on now, it's based on the best information we have, what we're collecting now, in our regular sales tax, and converting that to what we would be if we had a specific purpose tax on it. So, so once again, we're, we're still estimating that it would be about one point four million dollars a month, and, and nothing has changed in the last month or so to change it, so I think, I think that's a good number.
Do you want to bring up the point that we had discussed, I mean, using now's numbers too, that it potentially could get you off earlier?
Yeah, I, my first question would be is, is, I sense in your figures, you, there's no consideration for those major um construction projects that are gonna go on to the county that would impact the sales tax, ExxonMobil, um Jenner, Genesis, and that type of thing.
You know, my, my personal belief, Commissioner Chairman, Mr. Chairman, is, I don't think we're going to see a significant bump in sales tax for those, it's going to be a significant time period before those happen, and I don't think we can have those in at this point. So, you know, I think we're not that.
Thank you.
Another question for Lauren, what is the objective today with this?
To come up with the.
The number?
The number, the top number that we are going to, and then look at how we're going to allocate that out to each entity.
Today? You've been here for a while. I say a hundred million. That was my thought.
Okay, so we have, out there, let's just locate, Commissioner Smith, you said a hundred, we'll just go, Commissioner Johnson?
Eighty.
Eighty? Commissioner Shainfield?
I will go with a hundred, depending on packaging, certainly not all, all the hundred.
Commissioner Lloyd?
I'll go eighty-five.
Where I'm at is, is depending on packaging, 'cause one thing I wanna, as long as we have some things over here set separately, but we have the big package, um, I've always said ninety to a hundred, so I'll hang right around, I'll go ninety to a hundred, I mean, I'm flexible in there. What makes it flexible over ninety to a hundred is what are those that are gonna be in there, because we may have to bump it to make it work, but I, I, yeah, I, I, there's a time I, over a hundred, you know, I was usually thinking a hundred, maybe just a little bit more, but I think with what's happening out there as far as Slumber Jay, and Hall Burton and them, we're losing some working in that, we gotta be careful because, you know, I think it's important to take those things into consideration. So I'm gonna say right at ninety million, depending package, I'll go up a little more if we need to.
So I plan on asking to have um the bonds folks come, um, potentially, or at least call in for our next meeting, to give us some, some of the options that they have um around marketing, around helping us package those, once they do come back from the, you know, the municipalities on what, you know, what they want to put forward for, you know, our consideration of the ballot, after we give them their, their numbers.
All right, so between eighty, eighty-five, and a hun, and a hundred, is what I hear, so, is there any ground to give, anybody?
No, I won't, if, as the packaging comes forward, if it are packaged, if it's packaged in such, such a way that doesn't take into consideration the benefit to the entire county, I think we're making a big mistake. I, I don't think we can just uh put the money in Wam Sutter, and Barrow Oil, and Ranger, we still have to have major consideration for those, they support the entire population, and then you look at those within the, the cities where the population is, major population is, and, and still look at those, how we're gonna, which ones of those we need to put. I don't think we should leave that entirely up to the city or the counties, we've got a priority listing, I think we should use that priority listing that was given to us.
I don't necessarily agree with that a hundred percent, I, I agree that we do, we obviously will have the final say on how their package, but I do think that we should give the cities and the entities the opportunity after we make the decision to come back.
Take their own, yeah.
Yeah, and that can be, I mean, if the city of Rock Springs chooses to put one of the, say the airport on their um ballot initiative and cut one of their infrastructure projects, you know, I think that, that we should, as Rob said, the, the cities know, the different entities know what their needs are, and I think we do need to give that power back to them, to let them come back to us and let us know what they need. What are your thoughts, Chairman?
Well, everybody, not any thinking that isn't wrong.
I know, that's what the hard part of it is.
That's hard part of it, it's not wrong, and that type of thing, and I think there has to be consideration in the, what each community's projects are, and then give a percentage. And uh, when I looked at it, I, I liked the percentage idea, but then I wasn't quite sure how it was falling out for the county, and maybe a couple of cities and that type of thing, and uh, I'm still, you know, as long as I know, you know, there's those entities, I think, what would be easier for me is, is I look up there, is, I look at, okay, where do we want the county requested projects, first of all? Do we want them part of the total package? Which projects, you know, dollar amounts for total projects, you know, 'cause we've got dollar amounts for the county, we've got dollar amounts for the cities, but again, too, just what are those percentages of that total amount? Or, you know, that's my thinking, they all go hand in hand, Commissioner Johnson.
From the county standpoint, I think hospitals number one, the events complex number two, and the amounts of money that they put forward, and we look at balance, as to how we're gonna distribute that.
Yeah.
That's our priority, is, is, we drive this bus whether they like it or not, we drive it, and if the people will like it, they'll, they can pull this out of office. There you go.
Well, there's a big difference though between your eighty million and your hundred million.
Exactly.
And, I mean, if we're reaching Superior at a hundred percent, at two percent, then Superior's taken care of, you know, and looking at top priorities all the way down, the additional twenty million would potentially benefit the whole county.
Yeah.
While taking care of the municipalities as well, at least their top priorities.
And then, are you, where are you fitting in, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, just, the, the main focus, I think, on this, and this is what it all comes back to, and I know you all know this, but I, I just, I'd have to say was, the most important thing here is to try and come up with a way for this to be successful, and that's, that's the thing that we have to look at, it's much more important than the number of months or who it is, it's, it's such an important asset that we have, we have to do the best we can, certainly you have to do the best you can to make it successful. And that's, that's where I think, your, your decision, you make the decision, how can we package this so it's going to be the most successful? And, and that's where I, that's where I put down as, as, as specific purpose tax is just so important, that we all want it to be successful, and, and I think there are some delusions of brander out there with some people that it will not be successful. And it's very.
So what are we gonna do with the projects? Are we gonna sponsor Jamestown, Reliance?
Well, I think those are conversations that we need to have after we decide how much we're willing to allocate, so that's what we need to discuss next meeting, or even the meeting after that, and look at their, their projects, because really, I think that the breakdown, and after talking to a couple of counties, a couple of different counties who have just recently done these initiatives, they were, they came up with their top number, they broke down what entity was gonna get what, they pushed it back out to the entities, the entities came back with what their priorities were, which we kind of did that a little bit already, but then they moved forward with what their county was going to sponsor, and, you know, package the deal with the assistance of the bonding company and everything.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that the Rock Springs said, and I think they have a point, even though I think we addressed that, is they need to know what that top number is, and I think we should make that decision with Dave, and then, and we can argue about the rest of how it's packaged at a later date.
All right, okay. I don't think we can argue with how it's packing for it, I agree with you, Chairman, Commissioner Johnson, because until we know what their projects are, and then we package it based upon projects.
But what they, what they said, and I agree with them, they need to know what the number is.
Sure.
I'll start it off, I'll make a motion that we, special purpose, be limited to no more than fif, no more than eighty million dollars.
Hey, we got a motion that be limited to eighty million dollars, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, discussion?
Can I ask why, why is eighty? Because I really believe the feedback I'm getting is this thing has standards, is there are some people out there that have told me, they're gonna bore against this no matter what happens, they think it's, it's, they're gonna tax them, it's almost, I do care, I really care. I think they do care, 'cause they're paying the bill, but if they say they're gonna go against it no matter what, what is eighty? Well, I, I'm just, that's a sentiment, I, I really don't believe that, I think some of it will pass, but I think an eighty million, some of it's not gonna pass, depending on how it's packaged. But I, if you vote us down.
We don't, we won't.
If we move on to the next one.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, can I ask Commissioner Lloyd the same thing, why, why eighty million, why, why?
For the same talking to constituents, I, I, I think the greatest opportunity for it to pass, I like Rob's eighty-five number, but I, at this point, I have to choose really between eighty and a hundred, I believe eighty has a greater chance of passing as a whole than a hundred does. And of the two selections, I would go with the one I think has the greater choice. Um, the hardest part in this is, even at a hundred million dollars, we're cutting eighty million dollars of requests, there are good projects that are gonna be lifted on the table, and one of the things that I, I like with the less than whatever it is too, is a greater amount of flexibility to come back in three or four years, look at it again, what it's done, and say, what else can we look at? If you look at some of the proposals that would take like ten, eleven years to pay off, how can you forecast what the most important things are gonna be in five years when you're tied in the head? And so I kind of like the flexibility that eighty does, I prefer eighty, eighty-five, um, it just, but it's, it's apples at this point, if I had to go between the two, to put an initiative on that I think would have the greatest chance to pass, I believe it would be eighty.
The eighty is without the bonding?
That's good.
That would be an additional?
That's my thought.
Okay, that, yeah, and that, and that's what we talked about earlier, so.
What is the additional for the bonding?
Well, I think we have no control.
Okay, thank you.
It's the percentage, and then the, that they charge to help us carry it out, market in and everything, no.
Okay, so, any other comments?
Question?
Question, I agree, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, aye, aye, I don't see a little more, but we got three at eighty, so passes, eighty million's your cap.
And then if I could make a suggestion, I, I think, I really rely on Lauren, she's been very good at handling this, and I think Lauren should look at that, and, and back to us with what her thoughts are, as to how it should be packaged, and then we can discuss any.
Commissioner?
Would you be willing to assist us in getting steeple to either pollen, I don't know if they can be here, if they're in Colorado.
I'm trying to do it for the, the being on the second, you like with them?
That's.
I'm sure they'll be here. Steeple, steeple's actually in China.
And I would like to set up a time to talk with you and them, and potentially Mr. Newley, before and just to review some of the options.
Okay, so I'll call on the second. I'm sure they will be here.
Got a question? Will you talk to Mr. Chairman?
I know.
I'm not Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, help me with that. Provide, provide a passage into seniority in term time has some privileges, so we'll let that slide, okay? So with that in mind, I think we've accomplished step one. Now, this next step is, what's your feelings about notifying those entities of their amount of dollars?
I will notify them that we have voted on eighty million outside of bonding, I will let them know what the next steps for the next meeting are going to be, and how we will, are going to be meeting.
Okay, and then.
I've got a question about that now, Lauren, you disagree with me, and I, I really appreciate that, but, what is going to be different from the way they presented their pri, their priorities to us? What would be different?
I think we just need to look at, so if we're going to do it by population percentage and look at projects and all of that, um, if we end up settling on something that's over and above, you know, they have three projects and three and a half projects maybe could be completed. be completed, to give them the opportunity, if they want to move things around, or if they want to sponsor.
Generally, certainly.
Yeah, so I think that the, and I'm basing, part of these percentages based on, you know, priority, and what their needs are.
So we, so the percentages that we see up here in the first option, is that what we're going to tell the towns and cities what they have, they each have? No.
We have to vote on that at our next meeting.
I believe, again, what I said.
I mean, we don't even want to go into that area.
No, I, I would let, I would let Lauren do that.
Okay, I mean, I'm not having an issue, I'm just, for process-wise thinking.
So we're not helping anybody out?
They're not helping anybody out, that's what they want to say is, how much do we have?
Exactly.
And I was hoping?
I think I can go back to the entities as well and say, you know, if there's anything outside of percentage population in your priorities that you want me to share and take into consideration to bring forward to the commission, please, you know, please let me know so that we can, I can look at that in terms of numbers. Steeple also has, they do this consistently, so they had a couple of different options that they were looking at in packaging, and I think that makes a difference, too, when we're looking at priorities and how we're going to package things and the amount, so.
So, okay, anything else with that particular, that we need to cover on the project items?
I change my mind every time I look at the numbers, and then like, you know, going back and forth, and, yeah, it's tough.
But, I think, what is, what is the, you do both?
What's going to happen?
I need the biggest community needs.
Well, and I think, this is my personal opinion, but what we do now is going to set the stage for the next time.
Yeah.
And I would, and I said it earlier, even though I supported 100 million, I said a while back, I also am supportive of what we're doing being successful so that we can begin working if it's feasible, and we've talked about this on the next one, so that one's successful. So, you know, I know nobody wants to hear tax is forever, but the way things are set up coming out of the state, and the money that towns and cities and counties are getting, I don't anticipate it to be more, I anticipate it to be less, and so what it comes down to is, what we want for our county, for our cities, we're going to have to decide not only what the what is, but we've got to decide who's going to pay for it, or how are we going to pay for it, even more so. It's all going to be on us, more so the state. So I'd rather take small chunks of wins than a big chunk and a huge loss. So, good work, commissioners, good job. With that in mind, let's go on, I think, does that take care of the six penny?
I do.
I wish you're still, okay? All right, then we're going with the next, into other, the other thing under other I brought in was the workers' comp. Get ready, you call me there.
I'm going to add some information, because I need to look at projects.
Thanks, guys.
Good job, Rod, thank you.
Thank you.
Rob, truly, thank you. With respect to this, have you got any concept, I know some of the entities have talked about it.
You know what, still feel, after, with that in mind, we put down the, joining the WCCA, Workers' Comp, and I know last week you got a call, I got a call, and I think most of the commissioners should have.
I got a call.
Yeah, you know, and that's, they called me first, and visited a little bit, and asked permission to call each of you as well as Gary, also the option is out there if we need to, because there's still time, but the window's closing, but there's still time to have, Jeremiah said he's willing to come and talk to us next, our next Tuesday meeting, the first meeting in February, if we want him, and have more questions, but with that in mind, let me do share, though, that back in December 12th, like I told you, we did have the conversation about whether to join the Workers' Comp through the WCCA or not, we didn't do any formal, but we had the conversation, and for the most, and I'll just say all the way through was pretty well not doing it. I think there was some information that was shared with me on Friday that I didn't have at that point in time, and rather than make the decision for each of you, your own vote, you can talk, speak for yourselves, I thought it was best that contact you, contact Gary, and then we come together and just see if our thoughts are the same after hearing that other information. Some of that information, Gary, I'll let you share, and then I might have some things to fill in as well, okay? Gary?
The last time we discussed this issue, there was a copy of an MOU that was provided. Since that time, one of the questions was about the composition of the WCCA board to govern this Workers' Comp program, and I think the main issue was whether or not originally Pete, now Jeremiah, is going to be part of that board, that's since been resolved, he will not be part of that board, I don't think that was really a decision here, but it was a legal decision that was kind of hanging up over the course of. This process has been at least two years, maybe more, in discussing, and I think everybody's kind of the point that we're either need to be in, or, you know, so they can move ahead. In the beginning, the, there were six counties that had, the larger six counties that had to be in in order to make this go, Jeremiah's now saying seven, but we're one of those seven counties. So, in other words, if the, if the one or several of the larger seven counties don't participate, then obviously there's no program, and you probably know why, because there's no financials to make a work for those seven things. So, I think the issue's really this, that the Workers' Comp, State Worker, Divisional Workers' Comp, will give WCCA a discount if they do the program, they're going to keep all of the discount, they're going to turn around and hire staff to administrate the program. It's anybody's guess when or if the program would ever yield benefits back to the entity. It did in the case of the North Dakota example, after some period of time, and they have full-time staff, they're now, number of full-time staff administering the program. So essentially where they're at today is to say, hey, do you want to do this? As I told the board last time, from our standpoint, internal strictly staff, we don't care, it does not one thing changes for us at all in the process, so it doesn't matter if you want to do it, fine, if you don't want to do it, all of our claims are still going to go to Workers' Comp, they're still going to process them all, our rates are going to continue to be the same, at least in the foreseeable future, and by that I mean next three, four years. At some point, there may be some benefits in terms of getting the industry, which is county government, to be safer than the overall base rate may drop. As I told you, and I told Mr. Ryman, in the North Dakota case, they had 56, twice the number of small counties, and so they saw a little bit, we don't have that many, so I'm not, I don't know if we're going to see, I mean, I'm skeptical at least about seeing anywhere in the immediate future of those benefits, but it's not going to hurt either, and so the decision from the very beginning, Mr. Ryman has not pushed this issue as much as Pete had pushed this, but Pete was really trying to get Workers' Comp off of the counties paying premiums for worker, I'm sorry, premiums to WCCA. So part of the point is if there were savings and benefit, then they could waive or get rid of the WCCA dues. As some of you that have been around for a while remember, there was a time once Sweetwater County pulled out of WCCA for a year, it almost collapsed the WCCA. So that was Pete's real issue, this was sort of a secondary to that, I think the entities now are really more focused on the, on the Workers' Comp benefits. Administratively, I just don't care, I don't, it won't make any difference to us, so it's really a political decision to me of, one, whether we want to participate in this, to allow it to go ahead and yield some potential results down the, or is there some concern about the growing, you know, bureaucracy of WCCA? I mean, I, that's, that's more for you guys.
It's more for us, yes.
But operationally, we're, it's a, I'm really fine.
Sure.
So it potentially could save us money in the future, but it's not going to cost us more than what we would originally be paying.
Well, that's not entirely true, I mean, I guess, as you well know.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, I mean, it's unlikely, I think, by everybody's thing, but as you know, just like health insurance and everything else, if some entities were to have bad years, rates are rates, they got to have enough money to cover it, you could have enough bad claims out of that group, that the base rate would in fact go up. The presumption is, is that you have a bunch of small counties that are doing nothing, very little to either manage their claims, or to engage in programs that would reduce their rates, and that by creating this, you would get some of that and lower the overall base rate for the industry, which is county government, that's the concept.
Well, my opinion hasn't changed on this, we have problems with WCCA, the benefits that we've stayed in, and we fund them, my big concern with this is that it's not, there's no benefit to us, we're going to continue to do it, what we're going to help, help occur is bureaucracy that's in Cheyenne again, Cheyenne sometimes doesn't even remember where Sweetwater County is, I, I still am against it, I don't think that we should facilitate building a new bureaucracy. Today it's one person, next day, well, I can, and tomorrow it's another person, I just think bureaucracy's tend to grow, we have complete, complete control over what's happening in Sweetwater County, I think we need to retain that.
Thank you, Schmidt.
It's one of those, I mean, if I were having to do this, if I were deciding this for my business, I wouldn't really care, and I kind of, I kind of, I don't really have an opinion, I guess, I don't, like I say, it's hard because there's, could be possibly, maybe, perhaps, something fit down the road, and that's hard to bet on, so really, I guess WCCA is asking us, as counties, to help them, you know, grow, yeah, and eventually maybe reduce our, what is our, what is our premium each year?
Well, it's, what you'd be reducing is.
To WCCA, I mean.
Oh.
Do you know what we paid them?
I don't.
Our dues?
Forty-five, was it?
WCCA?
They lowered it a little bit for us.
County Commissioners Association, I haven't looked at it.
So, I mean, I guess that's, it's 45,000, or at one time, I think it was 65,000, and they lowered it because they sensed that we were somewhat unhappy with it.
And then what if we want to leave, or we, you know, what if we don't want to participate in the WCCA?
I mean, once you join, and then?
What if we don't want to participate as, as a, not, not in the Workers' Comp section, but, you know, we don't want to participate as a county within, because perhaps we have disagreements, then, so are we able to pull out of the Workers' Comp, or is it separate?
And I discussed this with Doc a little bit, also, the, the intent of this is to be relative long, relatively long-term, long-term meaning, say, more than four or five years, not to be in and out, in and out, but there's certainly are provisions, if you want to leave, to get out of that. Again, I think the issue that's bringing this up, and why they keep coming back to this, is that the larger entities are doing those things, the smaller entities are not, and so looking for an entity to do it for them, you know what I mean, to manage it for them?
Sure.
But if the large entities don't participate, six or seven now, large entities, there's no program to have, because the amount of savings wouldn't be enough to do this, what's driving the timeframe since we last talked, was they want, have to hire a director to direct this program, and so they would do that with the savings that would come from Workers' Comp if everybody pitches in, if not, if these six or seven entities are not in there, then the money's not there to make more money.
It's directly my comments, I'm not sold yet, Jeremiah, if you can, visit next, next meeting if you'd like.
We invite him down, if you'd like.
Right now, it doesn't, it seems like a lot more work for a lot of nothing.
I'm open to listening to Jeremiah, and just maybe getting some more information, but it, I kind of like Jeff from the perspective he took, you know, when I do this and partner with a bunch of other businesses for my personal business, and I, it's hard for me to see the benefit, I see more risk, you know, if someone isn't doing the training programs the right way, and those things, there could be risk in that, and I just, I think I have questions, I'm open enough to listen and be amicable to the idea, information presented now does leave me questionable.
I could just follow up on that, in my other life, for example, take Bridger Cole, where I ran half of that project, that, that business for them, there is no way I would have given away the control of Workers' Comp to somebody else, I would want to retain that ability to manage our accident programs, et cetera, and not just give that to somebody else. I, I, I just don't trust other people to do my business, they're not going to care for us.
And we don't even know who this person is.
No.
There's not even anyone hired yet, so.
Well, you know, somebody, somebody's got somebody in mind.
Yeah, sure.
So, one of, one of the things historically, I think, was that we're, we have a bunch of sovereign elected officials, kind of have operational autonomy within the departments, and it's been difficult at times to get everybody on the same sheet of music with respective things like safety and some of those issues. Today, we don't really have that, I think we have a much more unified group in that regard, and it's easier to move ahead with those types of things, and so, I think that we're going to do what we're going to do regardless of that, and, and maybe there'd be some sort of training or something that's available we could use, I don't know, but in the short term, all claims, whether we participate or don't, are going to Workers' Comp the same way they are now, no difference, and we're still going to do the same things we need to do to try to keep people safe, to do training, to do that, we're going to try to, you know, just continue to do that, but as you guys know, at the end of the day, it's like Elfin Church, you don't know when people get sick or stuff happens, and, and that's, that's the way that that is, so you try to manage that, you can't say that because you do training, it'll never be in the accident, it doesn't work that way, you might lower your long-term possibility, but you're not guaranteeing it.
There's no guarantee.
Okay, yes, I, I think if the, if the majority wants to bring, there was a time I would have voted to get out of WCCA.
I know.
When we had a, the head of WCCA was not, but that's another story. I support Jeremiah, I think he's good enough, the majority wants, they already have, I go along with that.
And I'm hearing, and I'm hearing that, and I'd like to have Jeremiah come down, and the one thing, going back to just a couple of businesses, the risk granted with the group, you can't control what's happening, there's nothing to say that our Workers' Comp claims won't spike shortly, and then we're alone, rather than average them out, is what would happen there. Going back to, I think there was a legit reason, I would Going back to, I think there was a legit reason, I will never question the thinking of the commissions back then of getting out of the WCCA. Won't never question that feeling about, hey, we're not, because I've sensed it's recognized very well from the east side of the state. I agree with all that. But I asked this question of this commission, at what point in time do we keep that close, but start on our own, making efforts to rebuild those bridges and working in that direction? And granted, you have to take some punches to the chin as you go that direction, but begin to start taking the high roads and doing things that, you know, we do it with our fire departments and stuff through MOUs to help communities fight fires because they can't have the equipment, you know, nobody can. So we all share, we all work together to spread it out and help each other. And if, like Gary, Mr. McLean says, no risk, would this not be an opportunity, in my thinking only, of, hey, testing the waters and building better relations and getting, you know, some of those people in the east? Because not only we see them as not recognizing us, but maybe they see us as not recognizing them and being, you know, and I hate to use it, but the old school adage, maybe we're not playing in the sandbox very nice as well. So just proof of thought, I think I agree with you, bring Jeremiah down. But I just want to throw that out there. I think it's time, if we want to, of starting to work into improve relations across the state with everybody. Go ahead.
I've seen that go up and down.
I know you have.
And the thing that I saw that helped us is when we had people from this commission and Sablet County, Lincoln County, that were very, very active. And the key that's there that has slipped away from us, the board of directors at WCCA is made up of you and the others. There are 23 people, that's the board, and that executive committee has taken over that. So the time that we did well is when we had people on that executive committee. So what I said to you last time? We need to get involved. I'm not going to, but I think some of you that want to get involved with WCCA should.
And we had that, and I'll go back to a conversation we had three years, two, three years ago, is, you know what, we need to, if we want change, we've got to be part of it, stay with it, and get involved. I'm trying to do that, but we all need to be doing that, if we can make it fit within what we're doing in the rest of our lives.
That's correct.
And, you know, and that's what's happened. I'm trying to be somewhat global and visionary over the whole picture, so please excuse that as a commission, but that's how I am. Go ahead, Gary.
I just wanted to make one point of clarification. Whether we're in or out, we're still in the same class code. So if we were to be out and ours go up or go down, it affects the base rate the same way, in or out. So we're not in like a group that's in or a group that's out with respect to the base rate. It's still county government base rate.
We partial list where all the counties are with this issue. Some are deciding today. Some have just decided this morning. Sablet voted to go in this morning, Sheridan last week. All 23 counties are right here on this memo of what their status is as of Friday, January 17th. I did give Texas...
How many were in and how many were out?
Right now, okay, the following counties have approved, and that's Lincoln, Fremont Park, Washington, Converse, Albany, Laramie, and Sheridan County. And Sablet now, as of this morning. Following counties have indicated support with final action scheduled for today, Campbell, Niobrara. The following counties have scheduled final action for today without providing indication. That's Teton, Carbon, and Natrona. And the following counties are considering action, but he's unaware of the scheduled action. Uena, Big Horn, Crook, Weston Plaque, Ocean, Johnson, and Sheridan. So we have, you know, two weeks, we'll have a better idea where all the other counties are. All right? So with that, signing will be by Jeremiah. Put him on our agenda, next meeting and a time that... Let me ask you, Mr. Commissioners, what's the best time you'd like Jeremiah on the agenda?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, okay.
Is Troy coming with him then?
He may. So make the invitation to Troy as well.
And I think Troy should be there if he can.
Yeah, if he can.
Well, that's going to be difficult for him.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it's tough for him. He's at a commissioners meeting, but it can work out.
Jeremiah's good enough.
Yeah, Jeremiah's great. I agree with you. Okay, with that, thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. Any other comments regarding that issue? I believe the next thing on our agenda, okay, the Commissioners', Executive Session to address real estate, personnel, and contracts. And I don't know if there'll be any action coming out of Executive Session, but people are willing to hang around and see till when it's over. With that, I'll call for a motion to go into Executive Session. We'll take a five-minute break and then come back. Or ten minutes. Okay, got motion by Mr. Lloyd. Second by Commissioner Shanefield. All in favor?
Aye.
Fashion, motion carries. We'll go into Executive Session after the break.
Executive session with no action needed to be taken at this time. I'll entertain a motion for the Commissioners meeting to adjourn.
It's removed.
It's removed, doesn't need to be seconded or adjourned.